All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 26, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah?
Here.
Hassan Ahmad is absent.
I believe he's still absent.
Moby Dune?
Here.
Nancy Brier?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
And Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Thank you very much. Our Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by another Detroit Lions fan, Mike Blackburn.
Wow.
I'm partial, obviously.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is item number three. Councilor Chair, Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of September 26, 2023 as submitted.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydun and seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? None? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next, if you don't mind, the agenda is our council vacancy appointment. Now, before we begin, if you don't mind, Councilman, I just want to tell some of those members in the audience and, of course, the candidates, in general, how we're going to be doing this. There's going to be a motion to nominate all of the candidates. It's going to be one motion made by one of the council members. So this way, everybody's automatically nominated. From there, the clerk is going to take roll call as to what each council member will be, who they will be voting for. So let's just choose a random name, Jane Doe, okay? So if Councilman Tom Wenzel says Jane Doe, and then, you know, there's two, in this case, it's going to be three out of five, because there's five council members here. So if, I'm sorry?
There's five of us.
No, it was, we, there was nothing. It said the majority of the council members.
Present, present voting.
Your mic's off. Your, your microphone's off.
Is that how, have to check with the parliamentarian, the ones that done the training, COCOs, replacements, that it has to be four, has to be a majority of the total, not specific to three out of five, with their five present.
Okay.
It's under vacant, it's under section 4.5, filling vacancies? Yeah, I got it too.
I just said, it's, it's not a simple majority. It's the, like a three.
Right. Doesn't say simple. Other cities specify. They'll say, you know, five are present, the majority's present. It doesn't say that, so they said they have to defer.
Correct. And myself and the clerk had a conversation about this, and, and clearly, like you're saying, it just says the majority. The only thing is, if, in, in my particular opinion, it would not be the major, and not that it matters either way, but would not be the majority of the total council body, because based on that theory, then somebody that's not here can possibly vote, because they are part of that council body. And since they can't vote, they cannot be a part of the majority. It would be the majority that are here.
Right.
Because, because with that theory, we would vote as a majority on every other item on any agenda during any month. And in, in all of our dealings, at the end of the day, even though the parliamentarian may say that, and that is the Roberts Rules of Order, and all of the way a council body operates is, at the end of the day, based on the way the council body, as a body, prefer to operate, unless it's stated in the charter. And because it is not stated in the charter, and we have always voted on all items, on all agendas, based on the body that's there, to me, that's the way we've always done it, and that's the way it should be done, unless it's in the charter otherwise. But just the parliamentarian, to me, would not be enough, honestly.
No, well, I think what, when we say the parliamentarian, the one who trained us on it. And if you look at other cities, other cities designate, and this is just for filling vacancies on the 4.5 in the charter. Now, other cities have, in their charter, they designate, okay, majority at the council meeting.
Correct.
For filling vacancies, not for what you're doing with other votes and things like that.
And ours only.
So when I looked at, when I spoke with them this afternoon, we were checking out the issue. What do other cities go? My opinion's going to be, it has to be the full six that are, that are here, okay? So you would need four. One candidate would need four, not three. That's my recommendation, if you choose to follow it or not. All I could do is say that. If someone appeals it, takes it to the cir, whatever.
Right, right. No, I understand. But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying it's not.
Yeah, no, I had to do my decisions and check it out. And like I, they said, what that says the language, it's the majority of the total.
Right. But the only thing I'm making clear is, it's, it's still just an opinion. It's not necessarily in the charter that's where we'd have to do it. So therefore, at the end of the day.
No, no, the charter says majority. It says.
Majority, no, I realize, I recognize that.
It doesn't designate.
What I'm saying, Roger, what I'm saying, it's no different than anything else on the agenda. Like, let's say last week, for example, when we voted, it was not the majority of the total council. It's the majority of the people that are in the council.
No, but, but filling, it's, it's a specific terminology, fulfilling vacancies. As opposed to last week in your agenda and what you're going through. If in filling vacancies, and they understand people, like, you know, putting this together, that people may not be present at that time. But for filling vacancies, it's beyond what you're talking about, which happened last week, or what did we do last week? So it doesn't designate that it should be, you know, three, or it could be a majority here. It could have for this. It doesn't. And so the way they read it, the way I read it, and they've looked at other cities, other cities specify filling vacancies. It's how many are present at the time.
Right, but if it's not specified, it's an opinion.
No, well, no, the charter says majority.
Right.
That's all it says.
Majority, but I'm saying.
That's all it says.
Councilman, I, I think, I think what the councilman is saying, and I think you both are saying the same thing, majority is not being specified. Majority could be the amount of people that are at the meeting. You're taking the majority of today's vote. Well, hang on, hang on, Roger, please. At the end of the day, it's going to be an opinion of yours or an opinion of this body?
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is exactly what you said. It doesn't say a majority of opinions who are present. It doesn't say that. It's silent. All it says is a majority.
Well, there is no right or wrong answer.
Well, there is. It's a majority of the city council. That's what it says. It doesn't delineate, it doesn't specify, or designate, or deviate from that. It just says a majority. It could have, but it doesn't. So the language, plain language, and reading the plain language on its face is a majority.
I got a better idea. And it sucks to say this, but then, if we don't have the honest opinion from either party, from either the clerk's office or the administration, which I don't know why we waited this long to figure that out, why don't we just hold off on this table and wait until we have an actual opinion then?
We'll get, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
In my personal opinion, if we don't have the right answer, we don't have.
Council chair, council member has an opportunity to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
It's not.
Wait, nothing from the audience, please.
Well, I think we can hold a vote. If somebody gets four votes, then they get four votes, and it's a moot point. The, that's number one. Number two, it's section 4.5 of the charter, filling vacancies in elective office. And the city attorney is correct. It says, appointment by a majority of the city council of a qualified person who shall serve blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And the, the issue is the definition of majority. Now, in the legislature, it was the, those present and voting. Because otherwise, if, if, for example, Ray Musket was ill, but not still a member of the council, there'd be a situation where he could vote for his successor, or he could, we could never reach a majority. But that's, the, the issue is, as Councilman Baydun, as the city attorney said, the issue of majority, I think it's those, the majority that are present and voting. Like, for Dearborn, it's always the next highest vote count, okay? Plus, it's whoever the council puts in.
It's, it's exactly what I read. And to me, the way I would decipher it, the majority would be the majority of the council members that are, body that are present. Honestly, I, I wished I had known a difference in opinion ahead of time, because then we could have.
It wasn't raised as an issue, but it doesn't say a, a majority of the people present. The language in the charter doesn't add that, what you just said.
Right.
It could have, but it doesn't.
Council Chair? And I did speak, like I said, I did speak with the clerk, and I said, I want to, I want to clarify, because the charter says majority, and went back and forth, and she even looked into a lot of stuff, and there was nothing that was clear cut that majority would be total council body or the ones here. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. You have to take into consideration, say, the extreme happened, where we had four members that, for some reason or another, resigned, or, God forbid, got killed in a car accident or something. We had four open seats, and we only had three active members. Then we wouldn't be ever, ever be able to nominate them.
Well, if you have resigned, then you answer your question, because they are resigned and no part, no longer part of the city council. They're resigned. And the vote is that they are no longer part of the city council. And now you're down to six. So the majority is six. But if you want to do, if you don't want to, you want to add things to it, or interpret it in another way, I, I wish, I didn't hear anything from the clerk. We did that other opinion letter I did this morning, but I didn't hear anything else that this was an issue.
Right.
So I'm just looking at.
Did you guys get an opinion letter this morning?
Not about this.
So basically, in summary, because we had to come to a conclusion on this, the charter is not that clear, and it, it leaves it at the interpretation. So even Roberts Rules of Orders, of order, which is what all council, or most council bodies follow, including ours. But again, there's, you know, there's a book this thick. Do we follow every single rule? No. It's at the discretion of the council bodies to which way we go. So I'm going to do this, just out of fairness. I was under the opinion, and my personal viewpoint would be just the, the majority of the ones that are here. So if it had been four, would have, you know, but again, that's my opinion. No, I get it. But I will go with the bodies and opinion is what I'd like to do. Now, Councilman Moby Dune is suggesting we just hold off until we get an opinion. Based on that theory, we hold off a week, or two, or three, or whatever it is. Now, at that point, you're going to elect somebody for just maybe one meeting or two meetings, which is almost useless, quite honestly. At that point, me, I would be in favor of not voting at all at that point. Just, let's wait for the elections to decide.
Get an opinion by Thursday. We already put it out there and waiting for anything else.
I kind of wish you guys would have told us coming in here.
I didn't know, so.
Okay, but, but if it's by Thursday, we'd have to have, obviously, a special meeting. Because next Tuesday, there's no meeting. There's no general.
Set a meeting for next Tuesday, not just for this issue. And you'd have a.
All right. So I'm going to take the council bodies' opinions to, me personally, I'm in favor of just voting three out of five. If it turns out to be four, great. Councilman Wenzel, which way would you like, what's your opinion?
Three out of five. Well, one, I don't want, I don't want us to be wrong, because some way, somehow, we're going to end up in the Supreme Court, Dearborn Heights, and it's going to be, and it's going to be, it's going to be Dave Abdallah versus Supreme Court or something.
For five meetings.
Uh, but, but I'm going to go, I'm going to go with the majority then, the majority that's here. I think, I think we vote on, I mean, who knows, guys? I mean, if, if a majority is even going to happen tonight. But, you know, ultimately, we're making huge decisions on, on behalf of the city. Today, we have things regarding new PCs, I believe, for the library using grant funding. Thank you so much, Mike McCaffrey, on that. But, you know, we're making that decision using taxpayers' money. And the majority's going to make that decision, whether it passes or fails. And if it's three, two, and we get three and two, does that consider pass?
I hope so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I think it should be equal playing field across the board.
Vacancy hasn't.
Councilman, what's your opinion?
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I agree that it's those present and voting. It's my opinion, though, the, the city attorney and Councilman Baydun bring up a good point. But I think we hold the vote. Somebody gets four votes, then it's a moot point. If they don't, if we get three votes, it's, they're not a member of the council until we approve the minutes at the next meeting. So we'll have some time to look into it.
Not necessarily. I, it's, I was sworn in instantly.
Yeah, the plan is to swear in whoever it is instantly. And by the way, to make it clear, I have no, you know, whether it's four votes or three votes, it's all the same. I just take my personal opinion. It should be three votes, three votes. But it doesn't bother me if it's four or five for that matter. Councilwoman?
I think the, the majority of what's here, three.
Okay. So lastly, the only other alternative we've got is to wait till we get an opinion and wait until next Tuesday. Anybody interested in that as an option?
I'm, I'm going to tell you that that's where I personally feel comfortable with. But I mean, regardless, I'm going to do what this body wants. I would like an opinion, just because we don't want to be wrong. And, but then again, we also don't want to delay it. Regardless, if you guys want to move forward with the three, I'm going to move forward with the three. I still think the opinion is the right direction.
Okay. Anybody that would like to wait until next Tuesday?
No.
Okay. And I want to make something clear. If we wait for an opinion, just so that you know, it's just an opinion of a particular attorney as to how they're deciphering the word "majority" means. It's still not black and white. It's still an opinion. It's not, unfortunately, way back when, I don't know, do we blame your father there, Councilman? But the councilman's father was one of, was involved in writing the charter, and they just didn't make it that clear, unfortunately. But it is what it is. Okay, so we're all going to go with three out of five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor, that's what we're going to go with. All right. So with that being the case, we're going to go, the clerk is going to go ahead and take roll call. Each person will say who they are nominating.
I don't think we, we even read 3A.
We have to do the motion first.
I'm sorry? No, no, I know. I'm just giving everybody a heads up. And then we're going to go ahead and take a roll call. Each council member will pick a person. Whoever gets three out of five votes, or, or more, will be sworn in today as a council member. I can tell you this. I, I speak for myself personally. Actually, I'll wait until the comment section. Well. No, no, we're going, we're going to do that. We're going to do that.
Oh, yeah, because you have to public comments.
No, 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 no. I will allow public comments. Absolutely, absolutely. It is, that's, oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, this was put before. I think it should be after. I'll switch them around. That's a good, good point. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a important item on the agenda.
It was, it was part of motions and reversals. No big deal. We'll reverse it back.
It's 3A.
Okay. So next, I'm going to go ahead and go to public comments, and then we'll go back to 3A. Is that okay to switch them around, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I mean, that's number five. The prior appointments, we did it this way.
I know, but, but, but what I'm thinking, I still would like to give members of the audience an opportunity to speak with our council members before they vote. So if they speak to us after we vote, it's almost mute. So with that being the case, I'm going to go ahead and go to public hearings and comments on agenda items only. You will have two minutes to speak. Please state your name, city, and street, please. Vince, thank you for pointing that out. Good, good, good point.
No problem. My pleasure. Fence trap, Kowski, Columbia Street, item 3A. I hope you guys make a good choice, because as far as I feel as a citizen, I feel you should go with somebody with experience, even if they're controversial or not controversial. We need somebody to challenge this administration on a daily basis. Make sure that they're crossing their Ts and dotting their highs. So for that being said, we have some people here that offered, or gave us their great experiences on their jobs and working with grant monies and stuff like that, and they want a council seat. If you're not picked tonight, gentlemen, would you be willing to do your experiences with grant writing pro temp? You know, you want to help the city that bad, come on, help the city. You know, let's not just show up at one or two council meetings and expect to get on the council. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Hold off a quick second then. So I thought this might come up, and I'm just going to address it. Okay. If we allow one candidate, then we're going to have to allow the other candidates. You do have a right to speak, you do have a right to speak as a resident. I, I'm just throwing it out there. Just want to check, do you, as council members, want to allow candidates to go up and speak again?
No, I think, I agree, because we could be here all night.
Okay. As long as there's not too many candidates that want to speak, it's no problem. But go ahead.
Hang on.
There is such a thing as.
Hang on, one second.
Ned Opigian.
Just one second. One second, one second. Everybody should have the right to speak. This is an open forum.
Okay.
We should let everybody.
Allow whoever wants to speak, speak. Go ahead.
You state your name?
Such a thing as precedence over 60 years.
Okay, wait. Name, city, street, please.
I, I did. I'm sorry. Rosetta Street. My name is Ned Opigian. We have a precedent of 60 years. When I was on the council before, there were appointments with one person, and we took the vote. That's what I remember by being on the council. If somebody has a longer memory than me, precedence has some issue here. It's quite evident. A quorum is a quorum. Why do you bother doing it at every meeting if it has no meaning?
Clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to comment? City, street name, please.
A sign of young public activists. It says over here, the majority of votes does not indicate, doesn't indicate if it's four or three or what's it called?
Correct.
It just says majority.
Correct.
So basically, if anybody's absent, they're not qualified to vote. That's what, that's, that's, it is what it is. You're not qualified. If you're not here on Zoom, you're not allowed to vote. It does not say in the charter how many people. So it's a three, three people vote on the same person. That's how when the vote at the end. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Okay. Seeing none? Anybody on Zoom?
Mrs. Treasurer, please claim. Has your hand up.
Okay. Madam Treasurer, go ahead.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My address is North Gully in Dearborn Heights. And I wanted to, I have a current claim item that I want to ask a question about, but I do want to say I wish you all the very best in your decision this evening. It's a very important decision that you have in front of you. And as you know, I mean, just even look at your agenda tonight, you really, I pray that you pick the best qualified person and, you know, wish you all the best with that. The current claim item that I'd like you to please look at is current claim item number 24, which is page 104. And I noticed we're not numbering our claims in the packets. I think that would be a really wise idea. It would be helpful to the residents as well as yourselves. This current claim is JB Electric, and I have the invoice in front of me. Do you want me to give you a minute to pull it up out of your packet, page 104?
Continue, speak. It's okay.
Okay. So JB Electric, invoice number is, I have to blow it up, 31187. And if you go down to the description, the first item says due to storm damage for $3,600. And then the second line item on this bill, on this invoice, is, looks like it's a change order of $1,500. One, being that it's storm damage, my question is, wouldn't this normally fall under insurance claim through MMRMA? And if not, then why? And then also, two, if we can get an explanation on, or elaboration, to tell us why the change order? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, it does say in here, price including labor and materials, plus lifter truck costs, trenching and new conduits. That's a $1,500 change order.
Right. And, yeah, and I'm just curious why that wasn't in the, the $3,600, which really, if you look at the $3,600, it talks about replacing 300-foot messenger wire, triplics number two. I mean, I guess maybe there was discovery once they were into the project. But again, I still would draw back to the insurance claim. So, because I imagine in, you know, the precedent, speaking of precedent this evening, we would see, like, if there's a, a car, a city car, that's in an accident, this would all go through MMRMA, just like a storm damage claim would, I imagine, especially for this amount, which, of course, is $5,100 total. So that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from administration that can answer that?
He's Ericson Line, and he, he signed this.
Who is, I'm sorry?
Building Department.
Yeah, it looks like, wow. Rick, are you on here? Is he, Rick?
I'm asking him to. He's in the third row, second from my.
Is Mariana in here by any chance?
Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is. He must have.
Rick, are you able to answer that particular question about EB Electric?
Yes, what it is, is the tree fell down and knocked the line down, and they replaced the line. And when they replaced the line, it also pulled the wire out of the ground. That was the change order for the underground wire.
About the insurance claim, though, do you have any information on that, sir?
It was given to Mariana for the insurance claim. Yes.
Okay. And I'd be curious if an adjuster, did an adjuster give us something that said this didn't qualify?
That I don't. That I would not know.
Mariana's got her hand up. Go ahead, Mariana.
Hold on. I'm sorry, Mariana. There we go.
Can you unmute yourself, please?
Here she goes.
Good afternoon. Yes, we had originally given this to our insurance company, but it was not covered by the insurance company, because it was storm damage and electrical, which wasn't covered. It wasn't building property damage. It was just wiring. So we did do our due diligence in those respects.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Councilor Chair, I do have someone online that was unable to raise their hand, but wants to see.
Okay, on agenda items? Okay, go ahead.
Hello, Gary Myatki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights. May I, I've never joined by phone. Am I able to be heard?
Yes.
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 Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Chair, for the extra minute. My comments will pertain to item 9B. I recently came before this honorable body and commented that the problems in the police department with all of the individuals leaving are retention problems caused by poor leadership and management on the part of the mayor, the police chief, and the directors, namely, at the top. I must express my strongest concerns that this proposed agreement is not financially sustainable on the part of the city and will create massive problems, and it may very well cause the city to become insolvent. Your honorable body should refer this matter back to the administration to obtain appropriate cost estimates, including actuarial reports that will address the pension implications, not only with respect to the patrol officers, but with respect to the supervisors as well. I would note that actuarial reports generally assume some things with regard to raises. It's my understanding that the actuarial reports that the city has obtained in the most recent past are not based on assumptions that there will be increases in the realm of what is proposed in this collective bargaining agreement. And that therefore, the amounts that we're looking at, not only in terms of the general budget, which this is going to cost millions and millions of dollars, which should be shared with members of the public, exactly how much this is going to cost, and not only in terms of the overtime, which is going to be huge under these circumstances, but also in terms of the pensions that will end up being increased. And by the way, it's my recollection that there is a me-too clause with regard to the supervisors' union. So if you end up approving this, you will automatically increase the supervisors in the same way, and increase their pensions and their final average compensation. And I can't imagine how this is going to end up being sustainable. There should end up being a full vetting of this proposed agreement in terms of the financial implications, both in terms of the pay, or all in terms of the pay, the overtime, the pensions, both for the patrol officers and the, the police supervisors. And there should be also a really clear understanding of how this all fits together, because, you know, it's 1% to the TPAOM, and I obviously like the police officers, but we need to have some horizontal and vertical equity in terms of compensation among the different bargaining units. Because otherwise, especially if you're dealing, for example, with the firefighters, and I like the firefighters, but they're going to come in and say, why aren't we receiving a comparable increase? And then when they don't get that comparable increase, because there's no way we can afford it as a city without. without being driven into emergency management, then they're going to potentially go to 312 arbitration and get it anyways because their most likely comparable will end up being the police unions, namely for the firefighters. So again, I urge you very strongly to have this fully costed out in terms of all of the different issues, to share that information with the public and to address these issues in a way that's just not a matter of throwing taxpayer money at them. Because that's what it appears that is being done by this administration. And I can't believe that the financial people involved would end up believing that any of this can end up being sustainable. And I think there needs to be a very public discussion about what exactly is being done here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Anybody else on Zoom or in the audience that has a comment? Okay. Raise your hand. Yeah, come on up. I'm gonna ask you to answer that. Not right now, when we get to.
Be ready.
Hi, Suk Minsky, Ambrose Street. Villanova is one of the pays on the agenda for tonight. Is Villanova the cement company that poured the cement down the drain? Because if they are, I would have a problem with the city paying this bill until that's been cleaned up.
It's not.
It's not? Okay. That's all I have.
But on that, I was there in, I guess, kind of like an impromptu meeting with the mayor on there, and he has instructed people to look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, with no other comments, we'll go back to 3A. So again, let's go ahead and start with 3A.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council nominate all of the candidates, this actually makes me feel great, that applied to file for, file the current city councils, city council seat vacancy, terms ending December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedoun, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Before we go to roll call, any comments or? Council members, go ahead.
I think every single person here that put their name in today, I, I'm so proud of you guys. This is not easy. And I want you to know, I actually had a conversation with Ray Muscat today. And he said, man, I feel glad to not be in your seat because it weighs heavy on your heart. And I want you guys to know that these decisions today that we make. I have a checklist across here, because I am so indecisive of who really I'm going to be voting for. It's nerve wracking. And I think each and every single one of you guys are amazing. And I think each and every single one of you would do a wonderful job up here. But ultimately, a decision is going to be made. And whatever decision is going to be made tonight, you know, just know that we need to make sure that our city continues to move forward. And my blessings and heart is with each and every single one of you that put your name out. And to Councilman Muscat, thank you for making this tough decision on us. But I really, I'm proud of each and every single one of you.
Laughing right now.
Oh, yeah, he fell off his chair. But really, I am grateful for all of you, A to Z, who put their name in. This is very tough. Please don't stop fighting the good fight, continue to show up to the meeting, continue to, you know, engage, and continue to stay involved with your, doing your civil duties. Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, I'm just gonna, just quick comment, yeah. First of all, I want to thank all the different candidates that applied for this position. Quite frankly, I didn't think there would be that many, so that's impressive that that many people are trying to do their civic duties. I love it. Number two, I do want to say, and I'm not just saying, just saying it, just to say it. This truly was a difficult decision because each and every candidate had a lot of positive attributes. I did not see anybody stand out in where I thought, oh, my God, you know, these people are terrible, or these three are not good. I mean, each and every candidate had a lot of positive attributes. It made it very difficult for me. I went through my, and then at the end, I sat down over the weekend, I went through my system and used the criteria that if I was walking into the booth right now and I was going to vote, what criteria would I use to vote for a particular person? And I had five things that were important to me personally. And I just ranked each and every candidate on that. It didn't make it super clear, unfortunately, a lot of them passed the test.
Yeah, every single one of you guys on this list got the same.
But we could only pick one. We could only pick one, unfortunately. And I do want to tell the rest of the people that may or may not be picked today, don't give up. You know, I'm not putting you on the spot, but Councilman Bedoun lost by very little the first time, then ran again and made it. Number two, very important, keep in mind, at the end of the day, the residents are ultimately going to pick who's going to be on council, whether it's this year or two years from now, et cetera, et cetera. So let's just keep that in mind. But for right now, it's only going to be three, four meetings. I didn't think it would be that popular for three, four meetings, but it is, and let's go with it. Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair, and I agree both with Councilman Bedoun and Council Chair Abdullah. Was very impressed, a lot of talented, diverse candidates, particularly several of the women that applied. Very impressed, and please stay with it. We'd like your involvement. I know Councilman Muscat, for years, attended the meetings, but did not run. And then if somebody's urgent, he didn't run. Still be here, but his health won't permit it. Thank you.
I'd like to get the ball rolling, can I nominate someone at this point?
No, no, not yet. We're gonna just vote individually, we're gonna vote individually, we're gonna vote individually.
Okay.
Okay? And just for full disclosure and transparency, I'm gonna tell you my personal criteria, what I used. Dedication to the community slash city, that was one criteria. Skill set was another criteria. Shows up to the meetings was another criteria. Experience on city council, whether have been on city council or just general experience in city council, and whether they're on the ballot or not. No one of these was bigger than the next, but these were important issues to me, and that's what I used to come up with my decision. Okay? Any other comments from council members? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Dave Abdullah.
Mr. Zohair Abdalhak. Okay, now you're gonna make your vote.
You want to think more?
Zohair Abdalhak.
Nancy Breyer.
I'd like to nominate Ahmad Al Kabi.
Okay, just to be clear, we're not nominating, so is that your vote?
This is vote.
This is vote. For a council member.
Yeah, it's her vote.
So that's your vote?
That is my vote, okay.
Robert Coniston.
Vote no on Zohair Abdalhak, and I would also nominate Ahmed Al Kabi.
But that's your vote. Just want to make sure we're not nominating.
We're doing his voting. Yeah, we're voting.
Ahmed Al Kabi, okay.
And Tom Lenzel.
Zohair Abdalhak.
3-1, Zohair, or, I'm sorry, 3-2.
At this particular point, just like in the past, we're gonna go ahead and have whoever's been appointed be sworn in, and they will sit on the council, so Abdalhak, can you come on up?
Are you here? Benny? Raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Zohair Abdalhak.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of?
And I will faithfully perform the duty of?
Councilmember.
Councilmember.
In and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
For the city of Dearborn Heights.
County of Wayne.
County of Wayne.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my capability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations to all the candidates and congratulations to the current appointment. Okay? Next up is item 4A, approval of the minutes.
I'm sorry?
Sally, put it over by me, she's gonna move it. Because that's Hassan's.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
You can see it from this meeting, Hassan always says by me.
Exactly.
No, by me.
We need you to knock this out in the next 10 seconds.
You know what they say, right? Since you've been recently elected or appointed, you're gonna be reading the next thing on the agenda. Not to say, but the rookie that gets on first.
Okay, so the next type? No, it's fine, it's fine, just a. Okay, item 4, item 4A.
It's okay.
Well, here, okay, you know what? Council, Councilman, stand up person. Well, later on during public eye, stand up for a second, okay, go ahead, take the picture, just leave that part out. That's okay. I know, but for right now, we have no choice.
I'm sorry.
No, no, we don't want to do that, we don't want to do that. Okay, let's go ahead and go to item, no, no, let's go ahead and go to item 4A. Okay, item 4A.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12th, 2023 with an amendment to motion 23-424 regarding the Heather Lane Park and Van Houghton Park improvement. The cost of the proposal for the Van Houghton Park improvement is not to exceed $57,500 as submitted.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedoun and seconded by Councilman Coniston, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item six.
Council Chair.
Fund transfers and current claims, go ahead, Council.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims ACH wire transfer 6 through 1 through 6-49 as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Bedoun, seconded by Councilman Coniston, any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I know that you said that there was some discussion regarding the potential of the cement being thrown into our sewer system. I watched the video by the gentleman who sent it out on Facebook. I know this is being investigated. What I want to know is, as I was going through the claims, I happen to not see that we're paying them anything right now. But I just wanted any clarity from anyone else on the body that if we are paying them anything right now. Because if we are today, I'd like to hold off on that until that's at least, you know, heard from the administration or Mr. Deeb can speak on that.
I've been looking for Mr. Deeb. Yes.
There was. Yeah, he's probably called in. I mean, I already talked to him. There were several, there were several companies working in that area. And so as of right now, we don't know who actually dumped it, you know? Okay, well, I need the pictures. So if we can get a picture so we can send it to the police for them to investigate. Right now, I don't have anything to go to the police. We're talking to neighbors, trying to get a video or picture to see who actually did the dumping. Right now, I don't have data. Are we paying A and G today? Then, no, there was some people doing private work, driveways and sidewalks, you know, for neighbors. So I'm not really sure. I know, what I'm asking. No, they're not on there. Okay, so we're not paying A and G anything this week? We shouldn't be talking about names of company because, yeah.
No, I understand, but.
Look, guys, let's call it for what it is. If we're paying a company that's, and we're not saying they are, I don't want anybody saying that we are. But if there's allegations that they are, I want to hold off.
Until we're sure, that's all we're saying.
Yeah.
Now, it may be, it may not, but just let's refrain from accusing anyone or any particular company.
Roger, you gotta understand, there's a video circulating social media and WhatsApp. So the video's out there.
Look, I've dealt with videos. It doesn't necessarily mean it's evidence, okay? And every video has, you don't introduce it into court unless it's qualified and there's a foundation laid and Mr. Coniston will verify. Just because it's out there doesn't mean it's true.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, that's the good news, Roger, that's what we're asking. We're having that, it doesn't have to be.
I just don't want the names, that's all I'm saying.
I didn't state a name until the name was given.
He didn't state the name.
Yeah, I didn't know the company that you guys said. Okay. But I just want to put it for the record, one last thing, before I prove this, I just want to put it for the record. If there is companies doing, I need this to be investigated? Because if this is happening, let me tell you what this is gonna do, our basements are gonna flood again. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm a victim of having a basement flooded. And that's the last thing that we need and want right now.
If someone is doing it, it's obviously a felony. And the Environmental Protection Agency has a designated detective unit that works on this with oil, other things being dumped, cement is one of the categories, so they will be prosecuted.
I mean, very simply, there's a video out there, if we could have the administration, I'm sorry?
I didn't have my, yeah, it's a federal agency.
Yeah, so if we could have, and again, the mayor did say that he wanted it looked into. If that can be turned into the police department, have it looked into, because obviously, this is not acceptable.
Yeah, we'll turn it into the EPA.
Okay, thank you. Any other items on item six?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Well, just quickly, there is a discussion about a change order that was put in additional damage from storm damage. And the treasurer brought up who should pay it or whether it was turned into the insurance. That's, change orders in construction are common. Or one, and number two, it's a claim, it has to be paid. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you. Yeah, that, the claim from IB Electric, it said that they tried to turn this into the insurance company and they wouldn't cover it. I mean, is that, where's, should there be some backup on that, saying denied by the insurance company? Therefore, we have to pay it up? And why is the city paying this?
According to Rick Watlin, who's still online, he said a tree fell over.
Right? If a tree falls over on something I own, my property, insurance usually covers it. Is it, was it a city line or a private?
The only act factor, keep in mind, is the city still owns the Warren Valley Golf Course. I don't know.
It was a pole right outside the city hall.
Sorry?
It was a pole right outside the city hall. Yeah, I don't think this had anything to do with Warren Valley.
No, there was something on there about Warren Valley. It's one of the.
Did it? I don't know.
Director Deeb's.
It did say Warren Valley.
Director Deeb has his hand up.
All right, Director Deeb, go ahead.
So this is, this is not a building claim. It's an overhead line in the field that supplies power to a remote standing, standing location. It's an outdoor overhead line. So when the tree fell outside, it's not a building claim, it's an outdoor overhead line. And that is not included in building coverage. So that's why it was denied. And it was when the tree fell, a big branch took out the wire and pulled the underground cables as well.
But it was at Warren Valley Golf Course.
It was at the Warren Valley Golf Course, and it's between, yeah, it's an outdoor type thing. It's an overhead electric line, that's all it is.
Council Chair, I mean, when a fall, a tree falls on my power line, I don't pay to have it done. DTE comes out and fixes it.
Sir, this is not a DTE installation. It's a private facility with a private extension cord that supplies power to a remote area. It's not DTE. DTE's responsibility stops at the building. So if it was outside the building from the DTE line to us, yes, DTE will pay it. But this is inside installation, it's inside 250 acres. That's a city-owned facility.
So we're not covered on any, any kind of line that runs through the golf course, overhead? I mean, I just don't understand why insurance wouldn't cover this. It's just, I mean, it's on your property, it's something you own, I mean.
Well, usually, I don't know what the deductible is, we don't have that in front of us. But it depends on what the deductible is. This whole amount for this was 5,100, 1,500 for the late, for the change order. So I'd assume, I don't have the contract in front of me, that our deductible is much higher than that.
Mariana's got her hand up.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I'd like to see why.
Wait, one second.
Didn't cover it, what's their reasoning for not covering it?
Okay. We'll have Mariana speak. Bud?
The denial letter.
Good afternoon. Again, we did email, I pulled up the email from Tracy Cool, who's our property claims manager at the municipal. Good afternoon. Again, we did email. I pulled up the email from Tracy Cool, who's our property claims manager at the municipal, municipal, Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA. And unfortunately, our electrical power poles, electric wires and transformers are excluded, uh, from the payment under the building and personal property coverage. So that was the excuse that they, uh, provided for not covering this damage.
I, I got to tell you guys, um, I think, you know, council chair hit it on, you know, hit the nail on the head. If we were to pull an MMRMA, we were going to pay a lot more money and just on our deductible. Let's just call it for what it is. Um, I'd also like to kind of see, uh, does the contract between us and, you know, the ISA brothers or Warren Valley, are we held responsible for that or would they be held responsible for that? And so I think this is the question that we should be asking. I think ultimately it needs to be paid. It needs to be paid. Um, but really, what is the maintenance on us or is it going to be on them?
We don't have the contract directly in front of us to be able to comment on that. Unless, uh, mayor, are you familiar? Yeah, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Council chair?
That's councilman.
I have a question for Ali Deep on this issue. Um, Mr. Deep, I see on this invoice it, it's extra money for trenching and conduit. Uh, now I'm hoping that this line was put underground.
So, um, it is underground to a point, but, uh, you have to cross a river to get it to the final, uh, location. So, um, it is underground until you get to the river and it goes overhead. So the overhead distance is extremely short.
Is, why are we, we, we putting it underground? Why are we retrenching? It's already underground there.
Because the old wire was fried, so they had to trench a new one.
Okay. Um, anybody else have a question on that?
Council chair.
Councilman?
Go ahead.
I just want to know if we have contract with, we do have a contract with the ISA brothers and, uh, with Revive Golf Management. Do they have insurance to cover any damage happened to that property or the city is responsible for it?
Okay, again, without the contract being here, we wouldn't be able to tell. Obviously, in general, in general, when somebody is leasing, they're not responsible for a tree falling over. It typically be the landlord. So just based on that theory, I'd imagine so. But I don't have the contract in front of me to be able to tell.
I, I think this is a very low amount. I don't think this is something we should.
Not, but I can look into it for the council.
Yeah, so if you want it looked into, the only option you'd have available as a council body right now, because we don't have the contract directly in front of us, would be to, uh, possibly table this one until we get an answer from, what do you call it, and then go on the next council meeting.
That's fine. Let's, you can do that.
Okay, so whoever made the motion, you'd have to make it with tabling this one.
Council chair.
Councilman?
What, what line item is that?
Uh, just IB Electric. They don't have the exact number.
Okay, council chair, I made, the Trump's, okay. The Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims and ACH wire transfer six through one through six dash 49, uh, with the removal of IB Electric as submitted.
And then send it back to administration.
Send it back to administration for clarification.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun, uh, originally seconded by Councilman Conston. Are you?
Well, I would say this, I, we, in, in that regard, I, I think we should approve the whole thing. It's, we've been told the claim was made and it was not honored, number one. Number two, we were told by the city engineer that, uh, it, it was something that was there, a private line. So it would, it's, it's, it's a moot point. I mean, it's already been checked into. I think we should.
So are you seconding it or not?
I'll second it.
Okay, so seconded, seconding the amendment by Councilman Conston. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the.
Council chair?
Yes.
Also, um, was it, were there three bids taken on this project?
It's a change. The change orders, so it's just an increase.
Well, this is, this is a, this is the work plus the change orders, one, one big thing, but I mean, it's over $1,500. It's 5,000. Normally, the standard procedure is to get three bids.
Okay, um, mayor's gone. Rick Watland, are you on there? Rick? Yeah, he's on there.
His name's.
Uh, Mr. Deep, unless you know the answer to this by any chance? Or Mariana? Okay, well, either way, it's being tabled, so.
All right, all right.
With administration, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I, it was handled by the building department. I just assisted. I provided technical support, but the actual work was handled by.
Okay. Can, can whoever's looking into this, administration also get the answer to Councilman Wenzel's question if there was bids that went out for this? Okay? Mariana, I assume you somehow will either be handling it or coordinating it with somebody. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I can follow up. And again, there was no bids because this was a storm emergency. So just like with any other emergency, it is covered under the emergency clause. It wasn't something planned and the power needed to be restored. So there were no bids for this.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it again. Uh, next item on the agenda is item seven A. Go ahead.
Council chair. I'll read it if no one else.
C E D D Director Jamal bid award Eaton Center restroom improvement. Recommended motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Eaton Center restroom improvement to the Simal LLC as the lowest qualified bidder in the amount of 62,000 and authorize the controller to return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Pending review by corporation council. Additionally, authorize the C E D D director to approve necessary change orders up to 12,400 dollars. That's 20% of the total bid amount. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment not to exceed 74,000 to charge to the Bourbon Center improvement general ledger accounts and paid from the unrestricted general fund pool bank account, which will be fully reimbursed from the U.S. Treasury accordingly, as outlined in seven A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Abdul Haq and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that?
Council chair.
Councilman?
I don't want to spend too much time on this, but, uh, I think the administration, I think the CDBG Director Hassan Jamal, Mr. Bezzi, who I also see is here. Uh, I know our fans from the Eaton Center are here with us today. I'll probably see them Thursday at 12:30 as we play C volleyball. Um, and this is, you know, this was quick. This was swift. I think we brought this up three, four weeks, we just started pressuring it three, four weeks ago. And, uh, the administration and the CDB, the CDBG Director, along with his colleague, Mr. Bezzi back there, did a phenomenal job in bringing this up. And so, uh, let's just get the ball moving. I mean, those toilets are very short and the sinks are very small. So this is congratulations to all of our seniors at the Eaton Center.
Council chair.
Uh, councilman?
We're finally going to have ADA approval. We'll have bars in the, the restroom. We've got gorgeous pictures and we've got to stack this much to read and you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I really want to thank the administration that finally they are moving on working to improve the senior centers and the, uh, public facilities in the city. And I want to thank, uh, Director Jamal, because I know he puts lots of time, uh, you know, toward these things. And, uh, I hope that we go ahead and approve it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, congratulations on getting this thing done. Unfortunately, long overdue, but at least glad we're going in the right direction. Let's go ahead and take this to vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item seven B, Controller King bid award.
Council chair.
Yep. Councilman Conston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the bid for a new payroll system, uh, to Paycom and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, pending review by corporation council. In addition, provided the mayor also authorizes any such payment as a necessary expense, the city council authorizes warrants to be issued for the payment of these services from general ledger account number 101, 200, 818, 000, Contract Services. By doing so, the city council is authorizing any such warrant and payment without prior authorization by the city council of the specific warrant and payment as permitted by and consistent with City Council Section 8.9 as outlined in seven B.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Abdul Haq. Any discussion on that? Uh, I, I don't like in the, in the motion, we don't have a dollar amount, um, that I see. And I'm trying to.
Is it a monthly amount?
Yeah, it's no dollar amount. I, I don't like to honestly, uh, personally open ended.
Probably a monthly amount, monthly charge.
Is there any type of cap controller that you're familiar with us?
On the second page, I think, uh, 6,100.
Right, but I'm saying in the motion though, ultimately, what's going to, ultimately counts what's in the motion.
We can add that to the motion.
That's what I'm saying. I'd like to have a dollar figure.
Okay, this is going to cost us about 85,380 dollars and 36 cents annual cost. Right now, Paylocity is costing us 93,645 dollars and 96 cents. So it is cheaper than Paylocity. Uh, it's, and we're really not doing it because it's cheaper. We're actually doing it just because it's going to give us a better, um, much more payroll records tracking better. We're going to be able to have our, it's more user friendly. We're going to have our employees actually posting their own time as opposed to, uh, administration doing it for them. So there's a lot of additional things that Paycom can do that Paylocity can't do.
I saw the comparisons, by the way, and I was actually impressed. Uh, I'm somebody in my work of business. I, I look at a lot of pay stubs, uh, for my clients and, uh, I saw the way the structure of the new, uh, you know, example that you guys had in the backup. Uh, I was impressed. I actually, I thought it was, was easier and, uh, I liked it. I really did. It was straight to the point.
Council chair. Councilman?
The 90, uh, thousand dollars, is, is that the total amount? Are we going to have to buy new software? Are we going to have training? Or any new staff or computers?
The 93,000 was Paylocity. That's what we're paying now. Paycom is only charging us 85,000 and that does include all of our training. So we do not have to buy new software. No.
All the desks, chairs and everything we need?
Yeah. All the desks and chairs that we need.
Okay, so the only thing I would suggest in the, and I'm gonna allow you, you'll go next to the councilman. Only thing I'd suggest is in the motion that we put a cap, the amount not to exceed, and we'll just say maybe 86,000. I, I'd just like the dollar figure on there.
Okay.
If, if Councilman Conston would like to amend that.
Yes.
Okay. And who made this second?
I did.
Okay, so motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Abdul Haq. You had a comment, Mr. Abdul Haq?
Yes. Does this company have experience with other cities in the state of Michigan?
Yes, they have municipal experience as well.
Did we check if they are happy with their services?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight A. Anyone?
Tifa and Brownfield reappointments.
Council chair.
Recommended motion.
He's doing it.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm gonna give it to Councilwoman Breyer because she had, sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral reappointments of Ms. Lisa Cortez and Mr. David Hall to the Tax Increment Finance Authority and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Boards. That's known as Tifa. With each term expiring December 2026, in addition, concur with the mayoral appointment of Ms. Rachel Felice to the Tax Increment Finance Authority and Brownfield Redevelopment. Authority Board's term to expire December of 2025. This appointment is to replace Mr. John Kellet as outlined in eight A.
Second. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and seconded by Councilman Conston. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight B.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Star International Academy to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, September 29th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m., with staging to begin at 10:00 a.m., as outlined in eight B.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, seconded by Councilman Badun. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials.
Council chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the contract between the city and the Michigan Regional Council of Carpenters effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine A.
Second. Okay. Council chair. Motion made by Councilman Badun and seconded by, I can't tell who the person is.
Council chair. Uh, we are.
What is it?
Who made the second? Okay, Councilman Abdul Haq. Bud?
Council chair, I mean, this is a great day in Dearborn Heights. Uh, we are witnessing history that a union like the carpenters' union, uh, is receiving, um, you know, a tentative agreement. And so I know that this is a back and forth. I think it's been, you know, from what I was told by our, our HR director, I think, a little over seven or eight years before we've had a tentative agreement with the carpenters' union. So, uh, we really are, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's a bright day today here in Dearborn Heights. And so congratulations to those who are part of the carpenters' union. Uh, we are grateful and thankful for that.
If it gets, if it gets approved. Thank you. Council chair. Councilman?
Just to let everyone know who, uh, who our carpenters are, they're in the carpenters' union. They're our, our, all of our building inspectors, our full-time building inspectors are in the carpenters' union. We don't have carpenters. Well, I mean, they're not union.
Yeah.
They're in the carpenters' union.
Okay, any other comments from council members? Um, I, I could tell you, speaking, uh, with my experiences in, in that particular field, um, it's well deserved. I mean, and, and long overdue. Uh, we've got inspectors that were paid quite a bit less than a lot of other cities and we were fortunate to not lose our inspectors. Quite honestly, if I can be blunt, surprised we didn't lose any inspectors. But I'm glad we didn't. I'm glad, uh, Rick is riding, uh, running a tight ship. And I'm glad all of the inspectors stayed. They're all great inspectors. I'm glad they're getting their fair due.
Council chair.
Councilman?
Just to also to add on, which you brought it to my attention, Rick does run a tight shift. He does a great job. Uh, there isn't a time where I call him and I say, hey, can you help this person? You know, can you, can you help this person? Again, I'm similar to you. I hire everything out. I don't know what, I can't put a nail in the wall. My wife, I put a lot of holes in our drywall. Doesn't look good, but you know, Rick, I'm sure is good with that stuff and you know, kudos to Rick, man, for real. Rick, thank you for everything you do.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and ask a question for Director Haslett on, on this one, our human resources director, if you don't mind. On this one and on the next one, um, we've had calls, concerns, questions, and then even today at the council meeting in regards to the potential cost on this as far as our pensions, uh, et cetera, et cetera. The law, and not having an actuarial, actuarial report on this.
So are you speaking about the carpenters' union specifically, right? So this is three employees there and the change that we made in this agreement was that we went from hourly positions to salary positions. So we are now saving on time and a half, um, which were part of the additional costs with the group in the past. Um, in terms of actuarial with respect to three people, not as much of an impact. The next group I'll talk about when we get to that group.
Okay, then, if you don't mind staying up there because we're going to be addressing that. Please, thank you. Okay, um, any other questions on this?
Yeah.
Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Congratulations.
And council chair? I'm ready to do the next one if I can.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilwoman's asked to do the next one. Councilman, go ahead, nine B.
All right, I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the contract and letter of understanding between the city and the Dearborn Heights Police Officers Association, effective July 1 of 23 through June 30th of 24, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement and a letter of understanding on behalf of the city is outlined in nine B.
Second.
And I'd like to add one little thing. We're finally going to give our police officers more money. It should be more officers into the, we, we bumped it up very nicely.
Okay. So motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, uh, seconded by Councilman Conston. Uh, I'm going to have our human resource director address some of the questions, but, um, I can tell you, this has been a pet peeve of mine. Um, I was totally disappointed for many, many years and I always spoke my, my say on this. When I started on the council. When I started on the council, our police officers were starting pay at 32,000. Honestly and bluntly, as a resident, I didn't know that at the time, eight years ago, until I got on council. I thought, how could they make the same thing as a guy or gal working at a fast food joint? It just didn't make any sense to me. We pushed it as a council body, and the best we could get at the time was 40. But now we are a lot more fair. We are a lot more competitive with other communities in the area. And the good news is, I've spoken with the mayor, spoken with the police chief many times, and directors. We have, right now, is it okay to say how many, Mayor? Yeah. There's seven candidates are like this close to being signed up on our police force. So we are going, God willing, in the right direction, and, and having this type of pay will definitely take us in that direction to be able to get, because you can't, it's hard to get police officers to come work for our city at 40,000, when a lot of the competing cities are at 60, 62, and 56, and 57. We had no shot at it. Now, fortunately, at 60,000 starting pay, I thank the administration and thank our police officers' union.
Council Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
Before we go down to that, and I'm just gonna echo as our council president just stated. This is much needed. We are not competitive in Dearborn Heights. $40,000 is not something you can, you know, bring a family forward. I'm glad to see that we, you know, we've come to a tentative agreement. However, I also want to make sure that the city can afford this, because we have a fiduciary duty to the city and to the residents in ensuring that we can actually afford to do this. And then, you know, ultimately, I know her, I think the gentleman that spoke earlier stated, you know, you offer something like this for a starting police officer, are we gonna offer something like this for a starting firefighter? And then what is, you know, I mean, so I just wanna make sure that this is something that I know this is your specialty. It's not mine. So you're gonna give us that understanding, and if we can truly, and I don't mean can we afford this for the next year? Can we afford this for the next 20 years? Can my son continue to live here and know that, because it's only gonna go up from here? And we're not gonna be stuck at 60 for the next 20 years. At least I hope not. Thank you.
Council Chair?
Well, if you don't mind, Councilwoman, I'm gonna let the director, she's been waiting for us. So go ahead.
Should we make a motion?
I'm sorry?
We haven't made a motion on this yet, have we?
We have. No, we have.
We did.
Yeah, but we're gonna go ahead and take it into a discussion. So come on up, Director.
Okay, so with respect to our police department, yes, we did negotiate a significant wage increase for the group. And yes, part of the challenge that we have had as a city with all of our employee groups, so we've had a longstanding practice of suppressed wages. And as you're familiar, many of the ways that we accommodated this over the years was that we added days off, time off. Generally, in the public sector, we are very generous in the benefit category. We do have generous time off, paid holidays, generous benefit, defined contribution in terms of retirement. When it comes to compensation, then, we're always gonna be a little bit on the lower end than maybe what's in the private sector. But when we've been this far behind in terms of other municipalities, then our recruitment efforts were severely impacted. And as a result, our police officers are also working a lot of overtime. So when I'm fully staffed, then my overtime is more manageable. That's where some of the funding for these increases come from. The second component is that we looked at sick time. So one of the things that has really been an impact on us as an organization is that when our public sector employees leave the organization, we are paying them an incredible amount of money to walk out the door. Now, this is a longstanding practice, and I'm not defaulting them about that, or I'm not criticizing about them. The city did what it had to do while it had to do it.
I agree.
What we're doing today with all of our employee groups is we're making an attempt to restructure their compensation. We're requesting some of that time back, not all of it, some of that time back, so that we have the resources to be able to fund this kind of a base pay salary increase. For this particular group, they were allowed to accumulate up to 225 days of sick time. 225 days. Now, the thing about the payout with that is that we recruit from within. So our patrol officers become sergeants and lieutenants and captains. That's what we want. But at that rate of pay, when they're walking out the door as a sergeant or lieutenant or captain, those days accumulated into that group as well. So what we've done in terms of future liability.
Can you give me an example of, of that, just so that for the general public, because I understood, but it took me a second to catch on. For they have 225 days.
We, we are paying them out at their daily rate. So at the time that they exit the organization, whatever their current pay is, we're paying that, them to that per day. So what we negotiated to help balance this is there's a reduction of the 225 days. So they've gone from 225 to 86. That's the future liability strategy that we put in place so that we can afford this increase going forward. The third piece that I'll share with you is that this is a one-year contract. The reason why this is a one-year contract is that we have language under this bargaining agreement that anyone hired after 2011, which is the majority of our employees today, anyone hired after 2011 has a reduced ability for what gets contributed into their final average compensation. They have a reduced benefit in terms of retiree health insurance. And these were things that were very important to this employee group. They're also very important to us as a city. And we knew that that was gonna be a longer, deeper conversation for all of those actuarial table reasons that were mentioned before. So as a result, we were able to get the union to agree that we would do a one-year contract so that we could deal with the wage issue, which is the predominant factor that we're dealing with today. And then that gives us time to come back to the table early and start working on a thoughtful pension and retirement system for our employees that is sustainable. So that's why we put those parameters that we have in this agreement. That's why, as your HR Director on behalf of the administration and the union, which has ratified this tentative agreement, I request your support of this contract.
Council Chair?
Can you please answer the question in regards to the actuarial?
So I cannot answer that off the top of my head. These are complicated things. We hire a whole company to do that analysis. No, I'm sorry, I can't.
Why it was not done? Why it was not done?
Because I have a one-year contract, and I'm coming back to the table to deal with the pension issues in just a couple months. In addition, in addition, command officer's contract is also expiring June 30 of '24. So in terms of alignment and what we need to do for both of those groups, we'll be dealing with those issues at the same time so that we can craft the right kind of solution for us that's sustainable.
Okay. Councilwoman Wenzel?
Thank you, Council Chair. I've got a question for our treasurer and our comptroller, but first I want to make a couple statements. Under this contract, our command officers, as mentioned before, our command officers who just got a really nice contract, really good contract, a couple months ago, they'll receive an increase because their, 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 their compensation is based on the patrol officers. If the patrol officers get an increase, which is a 50% increase in this case, then that's substantial on the, on the command officers. And which is gonna reflect all their benefits when they retire and their pension. So that's, that, that could be astronomical or could, could be minute. We don't know. And then we're asked to vote on this. In my six years on city council, this was without a doubt the biggest contract that we've ever negotiated or had to vote on, because we didn't negotiate it. We're just voting on it. A 50% raise for a lot of guys, 40, 40, 40 officers and women, I'm sorry. And another thing is, is all of our police officers, patrol officers, that have been hired after 2011, in their contract, they have no healthcare after they retire. And that's, that's a big issue. And I know we could negotiate that next year. But to go from 40 to 60 is a big chunk, 50%. You know, the maximum I'd like to see is 40 to 50 this year and work on their, their healthcare for when they retire, because that's a big thing to a person that retires, their healthcare. You take your, your pension, big chunk of that, believe me, this guy knows, big chunk of that goes right towards your healthcare. And so, I mean, all these numbers about what, what this, this, it's not only a raise for the police officers, it's what affects everyone up, in the next 20, 30 years as far as pensions go and raises go in the future. And it could, it could be astron, it could be more than the city can afford. But we have no idea, because we never got an actuary report on what it's gonna cost the city in the long run.
Okay.
What's that? Councilman Abdul-Had?
I always, you know, in the previous years, always wanted to give the police officers fair starting wage, and I wanted to give them, especially the ones who got hired after 2011. I want to give them health insurance like everybody else who been hired before. And the number is too high. If I just look, you have 40 officers included in this. Is that the number of the officers who are?
Patrol officers, 53 positions.
53 positions. If we raise them from, let's say, 40 to 60, that's close to how much money? Million dollars? How much that will affect the pension requirement we have as a city to put toward their pension?
So the patrol wage increase is $826,655, sorry, $826,655.94.
How much it comes approximately money-wise? Since you've done the negotiation.
That is the cost of the increase for our current patrol officers and looking at vacant positions coming in at that entry level wage.
So that's annually 800 and so on?
That's, that's the annual, so that is, the, that 826,000 number is above what we budgeted for those positions for this fiscal year. Additional, additional cost.
The effect on the pension in the long run. Normally, when the city gives something, it's very hard for us to take it back. My experience that they ask for more. I would recommend that we return this to the administration until we get actuary report to see how much really it's going to affect our budget and if we can afford it.
Council Chair, I had one other thing I wanted to say also. I, I, you know, I wanted to say, I support our police 100%, and I wish I could pay them $80,000 starting pay. I mean, if we could afford it, you know, them and the fire and all of our workers in Dearborn Heights, they deserve the highest pay of the state of Michigan or in this country, because they work hard. I, I seen the guys trimming trees today. Those guys busting their butts, man. You should have seen how many, how much they got done in an hour down, down the street. It's unbelievable.
I agree with you.
And our fire and our, our police department, you know, top, top notch. And they, they do deserve the best, but we, we have to look off the financial situation of this, this city. And I, I would like our treasurer to, to speak on behalf of this.
Council Chair? Okay, this, this contract was negotiated for several months, and everybody involved with, with the contract, obviously the HR Director. But we had a real attorney, a labor attorney, that was actually involved with this negotiation and the comptroller. So they did go through all the numbers. And again, this is only for one year. And for somebody to come in, you know, a person that used to work for the city, and again, you know, we are filing grievances against this guy. You know, for him to just come up and mislead the residents, and he was part of the problem during, when, when his presence here, mislead at the council about what he mentions. And again, he was part of the problem. I don't want to get into more, more of that, because there will be a grievance, it being a grievance. But this was several months of negotiations with the police. And it was voted on unanimously by the, by the police officers. And they looked at, they did look at the numbers, and again, this is only for one year. And there was a lot of work, and due to the lack of work in the previous administration and the person that was sitting next to me back in the day, you know, that's where we are at, where we're at because of somebody like him. And we are trying to get back on track and take management rights that was, that was done in the past.
Again, in the audience, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor, please. In the audience, please, this is a city council meeting. This is not an audience meeting. If you prefer to speak, it's no problem, but then you gotta go outside and speak to each other. Please, no comments inside the audience. Thank you. Pardon, Mr. Mayor.
Again, we have a lot of police officers, a lot of candidates, and there's a lot of police officers from other departments that are lined up to come and work for the city. So by you guys not approving this contract, it's on you guys. So you guys answer to the residents.
Okay.
Why these officers are not coming to Dearborn Heights. And we do have several candidates, not just the seven you mentioned, Council Chair. We have several other candidates that applied as well, so.
Okay, Councilwoman, and now I've got a comment on that.
Like the mayor said, I want to reiterate, this is a one-year contract. And our police department is worth a million dollars a year, guys. They really are. Thank you.
HR Director mentioned, you know, we took out some from one area, as she mentioned with the days. You know, we are gonna recover that from what she talked about. And also, again, this is only for, for one year. And as we all know here, how many times we've talked about this for the past few years, with the overtime, just being an increased overtime, and that's what really hurt us the most, is the excessive amount of overtime that was used by some. And so we are gonna cut a lot of that stuff off when we're, we get more officers on the road.
I'm sorry, I was next, and then Councilman Conston, and you'll be after that. I can tell you personally, I'm in full support of this. You want to get officers, I mean, we could talk pensions, we could talk healthcare, these are all important, but at the end of the day, most young officers applying for jobs, if everybody else is paying, I've seen it myself in the newspapers, 62, 65, 56,000, 55,000, and so on, and so on, and so on. Detroit was paying, if I'm not mistaken, 60 plus or 58, somewhere around there, almost 60,000. You're not gonna be able to attract any of the new officers or the veteran officers to come in here. I do know, I do understand some of the concerns about, you know, pensions, et cetera, et cetera. But let me tell you something. This affects your property values also, because if you don't have enough officers in the city patrolling and keeping us safe, you're gonna see your property values go down. I know that's a big statement to make, but that's facts. So we have to get enough officers, and I'd be the first one to say, as a resident, I'd be willing to pay more taxes if that's what it's gonna cost to make sure there's enough officers to keep my family safe. So 60,000 is not a lot of money. They've been paid 40,000 for years and years and years, and previous to that, 32,000. That is absolutely ridiculous, and it's impossible to attract people to come into our city. We should all fully support it, and whatever it takes, we'll move this thing forward. Councilman Conston and Councilman Bedun.
Thank you, Council Chair. Two points. Number one, this was collectively bargained. The Police Officers Association approved it. We wouldn't do an actuarial report before it's approved. It would be a waste of money, number one. Number two, it's gonna cost more, but with inflation, inflation being high, the actual net cost, I mean, someone can eyeball it. And number, number three, an actuarial report for this is gonna cost at least $10,000. So we get an actuarial report. It's, it's gonna cost a lot more money. Then what do we do? That we, we vote it down? No, I don't think so. That's not what I'm hearing, saying. So possibly the comptroller or the, some people on the pension board can compute, let us eyeball what it'll cost us additionally. Like I said, or our comptroller or that office, but to, to not approve it, to do an actuarial report that will cost more money, it's not gonna change the outcome.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair? You know, we're, this is like, this is like a tug of war, right? We're stuck on each side, you know? Is this gonna, you know, can the city afford this? But could the city also afford to only pay police officers $40,000 a year? I'm gonna tell you right now, nobody wants to come to Dearborn Heights, one, because of, you know, there's been a lot of things out about the police department, and people are watching us. I think the chief got up here and said it. And, you know, and I think almost every single person in this room, and I'm gonna name them, Sue, Rachel, definitely Angie, and, and my favorite redhead. There's, you know, a lot of residents that are sitting in here today who have been fighting, saying we want more police officers. Or you're not gonna get more police officers at $40,000 when you can go down the street to Westland and make it at $62,000. Plain and simple. If I'm a police officer today and I'm risking my life on the line, one, I don't want to come to Dearborn Heights because of how controversial it's been. And number two, I don't want to come to Dearborn Heights because it's only $40,000. I'll go to Dearborn or I'll go to Westland. Very easy. But we need to be a welcoming city. In order to do so, we must pay our police officers. Now, I get the whole pension thing that's going on. I mean, look, if we can't afford to pay somebody's pension or pay somebody's healthcare for the rest of their lives, we have to understand that these are tough decisions that we're gonna have to make, and I don't want to make that decision. My brother was a police officer. My brother was a police officer. My father worked for the UAW for 30 years, and if my father lost his pension or health insurance, he'd be very, very upset. But I think this is moving forward. I think the norm has become with this younger generation, me being myself. If I'm gonna take a job to be able to raise my family with today's inflation rates, I'm gonna tell you how it's gonna work. Am I gonna go work for Westland? It's gonna offer me $62,000, no health, or you know, health insurance up until I retire? Or am I gonna come to Dearborn Heights and make $40,000? Or am I gonna come to Dearborn Heights and make $40,000 and struggle for the next 30 years, potentially so that I can have a retirement? I mean, to me, the decision that I'm gonna make, I'm gonna take the $62,000 and I'm worried about my health insurance when I get older. Maybe I'll find a job at Home Depot or something that's gonna offer me health insurance, that's gonna be a little easy. Or maybe I'll come back and work for the city. But ultimately, right now, with today's decision, it's very tough. I heard what the gentleman spoke, I've heard from the residents that called me, I've heard what two of my colleagues here stated. But I also, I also know that we have officers, 53 of men and women that are working in the police department, that are making $40,000 a year starting pay. It's not competitive, it's not fair, and this is affecting people's livelihood. You want to put your child in daycare, guess what, that officer in Dearborn Heights can't do that. They don't have that luxury. And so, to me, I think this is a tentative agreement amongst the administration, a tentative agreement across the Police Officers Union, and look, they agreed to this. I'm sure that, you know, back and forth, they have taken away, but I'm so tired of hearing from dispatch that we don't have enough officers in the street, or we can't get there, because we don't have officers, because officers don't want to come here. So, that's where I stand on this.
Council Chair, Treasurer.
I'll have Councilman Wenzel, then we'll get second time, that's it. Okay, Councilman Wenzel, then Councilman.
You know, I just want to, I mean, this is a long-term deal. I mean, we don't know if this, five years from now, that this contract, you see, we're offering them $20,000 raise to 60,000, it's a one-year contract. Why can't we give them 10,000 this year and next year's contract, give them another 10,000 and work on their retirement plans?
I just want to answer today. I want to answer today. Just one second, please. Give me one second. Tom, can I answer that?
No, let it finish. Let it finish its thought.
But as I say, you know, we have to look, as city councilman, we can't look at today. You know, we do, but we have to look for the future of the city. And we do not know if five years from now, if this deal, which I hope not, because this is a great deal, and, you know, they agreed on it, who wouldn't agree on a 50% raise? You know, it's like, oh, they agreed on it, but you know, it's just an old brain, if I was there, I'd definitely go, yes. But we don't know if this is gonna be something that's gonna be a big financial burden on our city in five years from now, because we might, we might have half our police force retire in the next five years.
I just want to respond to that.
So, anyway, I want our treasurer to speak out on that.
Before we do, just hang on.
Treasurer doesn't negotiate this.
Hold on, guys, I just want you to know though, guys, I thought of this, and I asked myself that question today when I was taking a shower. I said, you know, what if we can't afford this? But guess what, in five years, we're gonna have to at least be at 60,000, in two years, we're gonna have to be at 60,000. And guess what? So, I understand, I understand the whole pension thing that's going on.
I don't.
All I can tell you is in five years, you're gonna be at the same spot where you're at today. So, technically, all we're doing is gonna be delaying the future of growth.
Yeah.
Look, inflation is up. Inflation is up 43%. I do mortgages, interest rate are 9%. An average, an average person that wants to buy a 200, an average person that wants to buy a $250,000 house in Dearborn Heights today, needs to make a mortgage payment of $2,900 a month, including taxes and insurance. A Dearborn Heights police officer cannot live in Dearborn Heights in order to do so. And look, again, this is a tug of war. Can the city afford it? Take me not.
Point of order, let's vote.
So, just quickly, I want to make something clear. Treasurer is gonna get a chance to speak, okay? But I want to make something clear. We did not give a 50% raise, we just made them whole. They were way underpaid. So, I know, I'm not saying, I'm saying in general, I don't want people to get the wrong impression. These are not people that were paid what they should have been paid based on what the market pricing is nowadays, okay? Let's call it the way it is. It's not a super popular thing to become a police officer nowadays with a lot of social media comments and the media comments, what have you. So, we're just making them at what normal pay is in today's society. So, if you want to attract the best of the best, look, in my opinion, it's still too low, but that's my personal opinion.
I agree.
So, if you want to attract the best, it's gotta be even better than 60. And then, you know what? If we have to figure out a way, cut some, something out of the budget to make this thing work, we gotta make this thing work. Madam Treasurer, you had a comment?
Actuarial report, yeah.
Madam Treasurer, go ahead, unmute yourself. Can you unmute yourself?
Unmute. Okay, sorry about that, I cannot. I have to wait to be unmuted. Thank you. So, first of all, I want to say, I don't believe anyone on the Zoom, in our community, wherever, doesn't support our first responders, our police and firefighters, okay? We can all agree that competitive wages are very important. We are aware that cities like Dearborn and Westland are coming in much higher, but also you cannot compare their finances to ours, because that's apples to oranges. So, let's be realistic there. In addition, I know this is a one-year contract, okay, and it would have to be renegotiated on July 1st, 2024, but I think you have to talk about your fiduciary responsibilities and say, what is not only the short-term impact, but yes, there's gonna be long-term impact on the pension system and OPEB. Now, what concerns me is that, yes, I am the treasurer and I'm responsible for cash flow and know what that's like, you hear from me all the time, right? But I also sit on the Act 345 Commission as a trustee. What alarms me a little bit is that no one spoke to the pension attorney. And I think that would have been a great starting place when we're having this conversation. That, I mean, because the other thing is that was mentioned, and I agree with this, this is gonna be something, you do this for one, you're gonna have a lateral movement starting, okay? So, you're gonna have to take that into consideration. We can all agree that they need something to be competitive and we all support them on that front. But let's talk about actuarial report. Yes, it costs you money, but you're talking about what is your investment on your future of being able to remain solvent? What is that worth? And to answer your question, I was a council member for nine years, and before contracts were voted on by the council, we did have an actuarial report, we did have a study session to discuss it and have the council members' questions answered and what the impact looks like. And it really depends on the content of what you're approving. So, I think that's really important. One thing I want to tell you briefly, your assumption for Act 345, which your millage is currently at nine, nine mils, and most likely this impact is gonna have you increase it, or you will need to, which means you're increasing taxes to the residents, we need to be really transparent here, but your current assumption is 5%, okay? Now, think about what this is going to look like, I'm just saying. And again, think about that you're going to have to renegotiate in a year, and are you going to go down or are you going to increase? Which way are you going? So, that is my concerns, and again, it's not required, but it's recommended for your consideration, and I hope you will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant, yes?
I know we're making a vote on this, I just, I think this is also very important to our community and to us, and I just want to let Margaret know that, kind of like the treasurer said, this is gonna be a lateral movement.
May I add one more piece of information?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Our pension for our public sector employees has been healthy enough to issue a 13th check. So, instead of just getting one check per month for 12 months as part of the pension, when we are funded in a healthy enough way and we can afford to do it, we give a 13th check to our retirees, okay? So, we've been doing that for the last few years. So, if there is an increase in that cost, then part of the pension rules are that maybe we don't issue the 13th check. So, all is not lost, okay? There's more information to come, yes, but this is a framed deal so that we can, again, thoughtfully, proactively, figure out what our retirement needs to look like for our public safety going forward.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just want to add on, you know, look, I'm no secret, huge, huge supporter for our first responders, love our police, love our fire, but I'm a huge supporter of our fire department. Margaret, I'm a huge supporter of our fire department, and like she said, this is gonna be a lateral movement. And I don't only, and I hope that the aspiration for the fire department is just as victorious into finding a tentative agreement and, you know, seeing that the men and women that put their life out on the line, because I know we don't have a tentative agreement with them right now, but I really hope to God that we find common ground so that we can have that tentative agreement, and we're just as supportive to our fire department.
We're bargaining with them, and you may recall, just a few months ago, we made a market adjustment with dispatch. We gave a very large raise to dispatch, same kind of wage suppression issue. We're currently bargaining with TPOEM. We also have a wage suppression issue with that group. Within the confines of the resources we have, we're trying to address all of these things. So, going forward, we aren't looking at 10, 18, 12% increases. Anything that we have going forward is 1%, maybe 2% for these groups. So, again, you know, we're trying to adjust to where we are so that we can be competitive and hire in staff. The key thing we need to do for the success of this organization is we need to be able to staff.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and put this to a vote.
So, Chair, I ask you to give me permission.
Oh, yeah, I can, it's okay.
I just want, for directly.
I was just gonna make, I was just gonna.
I did fight to keep the dispatch in Dearborn, when they want, in Dearborn Heights, when they wanted to move it to Dearborn Heights. I did fight to establish.
Move it to Dearborn.
They wanted to move it to Dearborn, but I fought to keep it in Dearborn Heights, so we preserved the jobs and the safety of our people. And I did fight to establish the trust, I believe, 105, to cover the $170 million approximately we have liability for the, after-retirement liabilities. I fought for that and we established it with Treasurer Lisa Hicks and Ray and Tom. I'm not against the police officers, but it is wise on our part financially to know what we are doing, to vote on something we might regret later on. It doesn't hurt if we ask for actuary report and we vote on it in emergency or special meeting next Tuesday or the next meeting. This is a big decision. It involves millions of dollars, and it is not just today, it's into the future. And it is our responsibility to know what we're voting on.
Okay, Comptroller had a comment?
I do have a comment, yes. Hello, thank you. I do have one comment. I wanted to just state that our revenue for the city right now is at 60 million, and this is gonna cost us 4 million, okay? That's less than 8%, and that's your police officers. And once you are wrapped up where you have enough, your overtime is gonna go down. You're gonna be able to get revenue back just by having them out there selling tickets, not selling, but giving out tickets. And, and one last thing I wanted to say, it was not a 50% increase, it was a 22% increase. That's all I have.
Forty to 60?
46,000 to 60, and it was a 22% increase.
We're to that, our media is 40 to 60.
Tom?
Objection, any comments and anything about it?
Yeah, don't say anything about the.
He said, he said a number, guys, let's move on.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and put this to a vote.
Finally, finally, we have been in negotiations with these people, and if we don't have a contract with them, we're not gonna have any police officers.
Can I ask, can I ask the comptroller just one question?
Okay, this will be the last question.
Comptroller, you are in charge of our books, you alongside Plant Moran, you've been looking at our books in, day in and day out.
Yes.
And on the record, on September 26th, Tuesday, September 26th, at 7:41 PM with 46 seconds on the clock, can you tell us that this is not going to affect us?
Oh, it's going to affect you, obviously. It's always going to affect you when you're spending money, but you have to find it from somewhere else. That's what we're doing. We're pulling it from overtime, we're pulling it from trying to get people to give up some of their time. It's going to, I will find the money. It's not gonna bankrupt us, if that's what you're asking.
So, you said it will, okay, that is exactly what I'm asking.
Yes, we, this will not bankrupt us.
Okay, let's go ahead and take this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
No.
No? Council Chair?
Can you please take world, I'm gonna have her take world. But, Madam Clerk.
Dave Abdallah?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Moby Dune?
Yes.
Zuhair Abdalak?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Tom Wenzel?
Council Chair, I'm voting no, because we're, we're voting yes, the council members that are voting yes, are voting yes on this raise for our police officers, which they deserve 100%.
On this total contract.
Yeah, and, and, but they're, they don't, they're voting on something they don't know the long-term effects on. I want to vote yes on this raise, this is $60,000 and more next year if we can afford it.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
But I want to vote, I'm voting no, because I don't know the long-term effects on this.
Okay, so the vote is no.
4-2.
4-2, motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is item 9C. Thank you, Director. Council Chair, are we gonna get an actuary or not? No, at this particular point, no, unless somebody makes a motion, a separate motion that either this council meeting or a different council meeting. Okay, item 9C.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the purchase of 120 PCs from E-Link for patron and staff use at both city libraries for a cost not to exceed $31,440. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account number 738-738-808 as part of a grant previously authorized by council as outlined in 9C.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item 9D, Police Support Services Director Vanderplow.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'd like to make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of one Holyographic High Secure or redesign ID card printer for a cost not to exceed $8,424 to replace the current non-functional ID card printer at the Justice Center. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the warrant and any future warrants, and authorize the treasurer to issue payments from the JAG a grant fund. So, it's coming from a grant, 101-300-981-056, and also to inform the police department when funds are received from the county as outlined in 9D.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and seconded by Councilman Abdalak. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair?
Councilman?
Are all the funds coming, the $8,422, $24, are they coming all, all out of the JAG?
That's what it said in the, is that correct?
And in the details, yes.
Sorry?
It's in our packet.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, okay, so all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9E, Police Support Services Director Vanderplow.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of 10 Nikon Z50 mirrorless digital cameras, bags, SIM cards, cases, and tripods for a total cost not to exceed $14,134.57. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the warrant and any future warrants, and authorize the treasurer to issue payments from the JAG Grant Fund, 101-300-981-056, and also to inform the police department where funds are received, when funds are received from the county as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by, was it Councilman Abdalak or Councilwoman Breyer? Who did the second? I couldn't tell.
Zuhair can have it.
Sorry?
Give it to Zuhair.
Okay. All right. So that's given to Councilman Abdalak. Uh, any discussion on that? I, I just wanna make a quick statement to the directors. I, I, I thank you for going after more and more grants because, uh, for those in the audience, they're getting basically money from the federal government instead of out of our own pockets. So this is good stuff. Thank you.
Guys, I've gotten so many grants for the city.
Wait.
Including the cameras. You know, a lot of stuff that was neglected in the past. You know, I do wanna commend both directors and our chief that they have gotten us a lot of money, a lot of grants, a lot of equipment. And you know, on top of it, we have the Department of Justice that just, you know, just a few weeks back, they sent some of our officers' trainings in, in Colorado for community policing. So, and it's all the leadership of the both directors and the chief. So I know that stuff is not being talked about, but there's a lot of great things that they're doing at the police station, including Department of Justice. They're doing a lot of changes and these guys, they're here. And I want everybody to know that they, we asked them to come and typically they would charge us approximately five hundred dollars an hour per person to come and do what they're doing right now. And you know what? They're paying for it and they're actually giving us grants to do certain things. So I do wanna commend our leadership, both Director Swob, Director Vanderplow, and Chief Hart for doing an amazing job and try to transition our police department to a world-class police department.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Any other discussions on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions. Eleven A. Anyone?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the resolution regarding the liquor license held by the city for Warren Valley Golf Course, appointing Mayor Bazey and Chief of Staff Hernandez as authorized signatories for any, for all documents related to the approval of.
Removal.
Removal. Excuse me. Removal of Ornata Golf Services as co-licensee on the Michigan Liquor License for the Warren Valley Golf Course. In addition, instruct the city clerk to notify the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of these appointments as required by law as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Coniston and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
I just, um, I don't understand why, um, we're specifying two people only to make all authorized signatures on any document that's related to this in the future. Shouldn't the documents come before city council and then we say, we approve it? We approve the mayor or the chief of staff to sign these documents? Because what does this mean? What, what documents are they talking about? It doesn't say anywhere in here what kind of documents are we okaying them to sign?
Okay. The, the only thing I wanna clarify, Councilman, is this is just in regards to the liquor license only. So this is not, so it's not profits hypothetically from liquor, uh, Warren Valley Golf Course, this or that. It is specifically getting the liquor license for Warren Valley Golf Course. Uh, somebody from the side spoke. I don't know who it was. That you, Roger?
Well, yeah. It's, it's, it's requirements. We've looked through all the paperwork. It's what the liquor, like, uh, Licensing Commission requires. And you gotta get Ornata. Ornata has been working with us. They're off the contract. This is a procedural matter. Anything else?
Council Chair.
Nothing with substance. Nothing with substance. It's simply the procedural requirements that they, that they require.
Council Chair.
And, and also, I'm sorry. And also on top of it, you guys have seen the same thing when we put Ornata on several years ago. And I think it was twenty nineteen. So it's the same process. We need to remove them. In order to do that, we have to put this resolution in place.
Council Chair.
Okay. Councilman?
I actually spoke with the attorney that's working on this. And he explained to me and walked me through it. You have to remove Ornata and then you can, uh, add whomever we're adding. So I'm, I just want you to know that I actually did, you know, I, I made the research and I made the phone calls and you have to remove Ornata before you can do it. So before you can open it up. It's like an escrow. So this is stric, strictly only for removing Ornata from the liquor license.
Read the resolution, Councilman. You see.
Well, I did, but you know, I'm not a lawyer. That's why we have a guy over there.
Well, that's why he put on an agenda, Councilman.
I'm sorry. What was that?
That's why he put on a, an agenda, 'cause the attorney looked at it.
Okay. Uh, any other discussions on this?
Council Chair, I just wanna make it clear. This is only for removal of Ornata from, it's not issuing a new, applying for a new liquor license.
No. We took the license out of escrow. So, um.
Oh, okay.
And it wasn't escrow. So this is just the procedural, like I said, the procedural part, not the substance part. What needs to be required.
Roger, is this something that we have a license and it's in, like you said, it's in escrow and we're just going to keep it and then put someone else on it in the future, in the near future?
No, we took.
Along with the city?
We've taken, yeah. We're taking out of escrow, but to do certain things, there were stuff done before I, not done before I came on board. And then we started, that's why we brought other councilmen to help us, uh, to negotiate with the Liquor License Commission to make sure this is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, let's go ahead and put this to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is item thirteen A, business license. Council Chair. Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Randy's Robindale Bar at two five one two two Warren as outlined in thirteen A.
Support. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Baydun, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Okay? Uh, well, just quickly, I, I heard they got great fish sandwiches. I have not tried them, so, but I hear they got a little bit of fish. The tuna?
Tuna and fish.
They're good.
Yeah. That's what I heard. I haven't tried it yet. I keep forgetting to try it. So maybe I'll remember now.
Council Chair. Just a little bit about Randy's. That was the spot right after, uh.
Yeah. I know the place. I just didn't try their fish sandwich, so try it out. All right. Let's go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Well, school is back. You know, I, I wanna thank our police officers. I saw most recently, um, driving through the neighborhood, driving through Riverside. I believe, I actually, I was a little kinda thrown off seeing some cops at Riverside. It kinda threw me off, but I was like, whoa, am I getting pulled over? Uh, but luckily I was only doing thirty-five in a school zone, so. Whoa, whoa, hold on, hold on. Beach daily, beach daily is thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
We learned it to twenty. Well, maybe we need some blinking lights to say reduce.
Confessions, Councilman.
Maybe we need some, uh, blinking lights. Anyhow, twenty-five.
Wanna get away?
Uh, but, but really, guys, look, I know today we made a decision to make a vote. A lot of you guys in here, all you guys are all, all my friends and, and we had to make a tough, 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 tough decision. Uh, and I was really stuck between, I mean, even the last second, I didn't know what word was gonna come out of my mouth, really. My mind was saying something. My heart was feeling something. My lips said something. So I want you to know that I genuinely appreciate every single one of you guys and, uh, you know, continue to fight the good fight. Congratulations to Mr. Abdalak. Uh, I'm gonna tell you to please, uh, let's do what's best moving our city forward. And I think ultimately, you know, there's been some chatter, oh my God, if Mr. Abdalak gets on, including myself. Uh, but I hope that, you know, that chatter goes away and you can prove everybody wrong and we just wanna do the right things for the city.
I didn't know that. I'm so scared.
It could be scary.
So just a quick comment. I, I, I know I spoke in regards to all the candidates. I wish you guys all the best. I, I really honestly and truly liked every candidate. This was a very difficult decision, but a lot of candidates gotta understand, I mean, you can only pick one. You can't pick, you know, it, it's hard. And I took completely out of the equation who I like or don't like or friends with or whatever. Because honestly, the decision cannot be based on that. It's gotta be based on who I felt would have the most experience to be able to serve for such a short time period. And the other big criteria was they had to be on the ballot in my, in my eyes. So that, that was the main criteria that I, I used amongst the other criteria. But at this particular point, I wanna take just a moment of silence for just ten seconds. In, in a second, I'll, I'll, we'll go there. First of all, I wanna commend the Dearborn Police Department for, for a very good job as far as the investigation is concerned. Unfortunately, about a week back, um, my cousin's son, also somebody I've done business with, also somebody that I know, Mr. Hassan Salami, his family lives in Dearborn Heights, unfortunately was, I'll just say, I don't care, murdered, you know, during a, a armed robbery. And, uh, a very unfortunate, very sad time for the whole family, including, of course, myself. At the last council meeting, I came in half hour late and didn't even know it. My mind was just not there. Twenty-nine years old. I, I hope he gets his justice and I hope the, the, the three, I'll leave it blank, that did it.
Perpetrators.
They get their justice too, because it's a, it's a very, very sad situation for the family. Longtime business people in the city of Dearborn, uh, Dearborn Heights residents. You, you don't wanna see the family in the situation they were in. For a mother to bury her son at twenty-nine years old is a very, very sad situation. And honestly, in the same week, I lost another cousin, so God rest her soul too. But this was hard for somebody to lose their, their life like that. So for Mr. Hassan Salami, I don't know what to say. Just, just a moment of silence, please. Ten seconds. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council Chair. This past Saturday, me and my family had the pleasure of attending the, uh, outdoor family movie night at Swamp Park, put on by our Parks and Recreation Department. Had a fantastic turnout. It was a really good time, really good movie. It's a little, got a little bit cold and everyone's wrapped up in their blankets. It's probably pretty cool to see all the families out there and, you know, huddling up with each other. And, but the District Seven Dad's Club, uh, had the concession profits from the concession stand. It was a very, very good evening. And next time they have one of these, I hope, uh, we have even more people attend. And there's a lot of things coming up with, especially with our senior centers coming in the near future. And I hope our, our Parks and Rec Director, uh, Lauren Sell is on, she could talk about things coming up and, and real soon. And, um, I'm gonna congratulate our police department in getting their raise. Um, this is some, I'm a hundred percent for the raise, even more next year probably or a couple of years after that. Is that they deserve it, the stuff that they put through and all of our first responders. And let's hope that we do the same for our fire department, equal raises, and our TPOM personnel. Let's give them the huge raises that they deserve. Let's go right across the board with this. And, uh, um, I was just wondering, uh, Council, Council Chair. Is Ms. Smith here? No? Comptroller, HR Director? I was wondering when this, this raise takes effect. How soon can our, our officers expect to get this on their paycheck? Does anybody know?
It says July first through next year.
July first?
Fiscal year.
The fiscal year.
The start of the next fiscal year, July first. That's when this takes effect.
No. It started this July.
This, this July. It was retroactive. Are they gonna get a retroactive pay? Are they? Okay. Well, congratulations, guys and girls. That's, that's a, that's a, a very good thing that you've got. And, um, I wanna, I wanna congratulate our candidates, especially Mr. Abdalak here. All the candidates that were here, I, I've talked to all of you and I know you have the best intentions for the city of Dearborn Heights. Your input to me personally has meant a lot and it's made me think a lot about issues in the city. And, uh, thank you all for taking time out and dressing up real nice and coming to the meeting. And, uh, one other thing on a, this kind of a sad note. This October fourteenth will be the one-year anniversary of, uh, the death of Joey Smith, who was killed on his bicycle on the corner of Party and Annapolis. Together with his mother and Margaret King, uh, they're, they're planning a memorial service on that intersection. I spoke with the Fire and Police Department and we were given, advised, maybe we should have it at the Richard A. Young Center. But after speaking with the family, they're dead set and I'm along with, the, the event, the memorial's gonna take place on, uh, Saturday, October fourteenth in the evening. Specific time will be coming up, but we secured the property at Party School, so we won't have to be in the intersection itself. The whole grassy area.
Saturday, October fourteenth, at what time?
Well, I, I, we're not a hundred percent sure. Probably about, starting about nine o'clock or something like that, because he was, he was killed around ten o'clock.
Going to nine PM, you said?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll come up with the exact time to meet there and the details on it. And I wanna thank Chief Brokaw from the Fire Department and our police department. Officer Swob, who I've had communications with and I will have some future communications with him on this issue. But, uh, this is a very worthwhile event and it's, it, for a tragedy. And let's keep fighting for the school safety and crossings and crossings and safety for all of our residents throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Waiting for an announcement.
Let's have, okay. Go ahead, Council. No, she was gonna do announcements, so that's later. So go ahead.
Okay. First, I wanna thank my colleagues, the City Council, for giving me the confidence and the trust that you appointed me for a third time Treasurer, City Council and City Council. That means a lot to me and I hope I will prove everybody wrong, that I will do whatever it takes, even if I make a very hard decision, which is good for the city and for the residents and for our employees of the city. That's my priority. That's my goal and I'm not here to please anybody. I'm here just to do what is right and what is within the borders of the charter, simple and easy. I wanna share with everybody in the city, during COVID, my wife had a hundred percent blockage in her artery. If it wasn't for our fire department, taking her from our doorsteps to the operation room, she would have died. That happened in less than five minutes between three, five, four Rosemary and Garden City. So anybody who doubt that I love my fire department and police department and I wanna give them the best I can within the borders of our fiscal capability will be wrong and doesn't know me. It is our responsibility to make sure that the money we spend, it's spent right. It's spent to benefit the public, the resident of the city and to spend wisely. And that's why I am going to ask to suspend the rules, to put a motion, to ask for actuary report about the contract of the police department, which we just approved. At least we know for the future what we have on our hands.
Okay. Let's just see, first of all, if there's any other, uh, council member comments, not on this in general for themselves. Okay? Hearing none.
Council Chair. Go, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So you go ahead. You wanna make the motion, see if it gets a second, and we'll go ahead and take it to a discussion or vote.
Yeah.
So first one is to suspend the rules.
I will make motion to suspend the rules.
Support.
Motion made to suspend the rules by Councilman Abdalak, seconded by Councilman Baydun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
So we're making a motion to do an actuary, to ask the administration.
This one is, because in order to have a motion added that is not on the agenda.
Right.
And had not been published, you have to suspend the rules. You make the motion. Once it's, if it, if it passes, then there would have to be another motion for the actuary report.
So that's what we're.
Right. Right now, just to suspend the rules. Correct. Council, I'm tired, man.
There you go. We don't gotta suspend the rules.
There you go, we don't get to suspend the rules, just request it.
I just want to make sure on record that we.
So the, the only X factor, and I, and I thought about it, this has to be addressed. If we request one, so let's just pick a number, whether it's $1, $2 million or $80 billion. We've already approved the contract. It, it wouldn't make any difference. So the only issue would be, if this is going to be added, would be whether we, it would be dependent, whether the contract would be dependent on what you find out in that, because we've already approved the contract. So when we find out in this report, I don't want to say it's useless, but the contract is already approved.
Council Chair, we spending so much money on the contract and increases and things. I think this is a very big, small fraction of the cost.
Council Chair?
Okay, so, so let's, let's, let's talk about the, and I apologize because I know we're going to go into a longer discussion. So let's vote on suspending the rules first and then you can make this motion and we'll go ahead and discuss it from there. So motion made by Council Abdul-Hak, seconded by Councilman Baydun to suspend the rules. Any other discussions on that?
Council Chair?
Yes.
Well.
Oh, no, not in the report.
What?
Suspension.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but just suspend the rules to add this. I just reiterate, I just heard the mayor say we could, we could get an actuary report. I heard you say correctly, we, we voted it in, it's done, it's not going to make any difference except that. I heard the controller say it'll cost us about an additional $4 million.
No.
Oh, not for the report, okay.
For, for the, for the, the contract.
Right. Okay, so let's go ahead and, uh, vote on suspending the rules specifically only. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah?
No.
We should add more, our further discussion, Council Chair. We, we had more discussion before we voted and you said, let's wait until we vote.
We're voting just to suspend the rules.
This is just to suspend the rules only at this point.
A motion was made and then, then you had to discuss it.
We did. There was no additional comment. Ah, no problem. I will, I will, we'll hold off on the vote, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, do you know you have another comment?
The reason, you know, this, the contract was passed, but we've got another contract with them next year, one year from now. This would be instrumental, very instrumental in dealing with them next year. Say, oh, you know what, by the way, we got a ton more money. We can give them more money next year. Or whoa, 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 it, it, you know, we got this actuary and you got what you got right now and we're not going to take that away from you. But any further thing we have to think about. The actuary is very important to, for this contract and our, our deal with them in just one year from now.
Okay, let's have no further discussion on the actual report at this point. Right now, just on suspend the rules. So let's go ahead and take that to a vote. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Okay. Dave Abdallah?
No.
Robert Coniston?
No.
Moby Dun?
Yes.
Zuhair Abdallah?
Yes.
Nancy Brayer?
No.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't pass.
Okay, motion failed. Uh, keep in mind, uh, council members, you could also, if this is important, you bring it as a resolution or just at the next council meeting, add it on the agenda. Okay. Uh, any announcements from, uh, council members and administration?
Yes.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Tomorrow night at, uh, 6:00 PM, we have the Ekor's Creek meeting. If anyone would care to attend, but even more importantly, on Thursday at 6:30 PM, we will have, sponsored by the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, a candidate forum. This is for the November election and the five candidates that are running for three positions. If you come, you will be able to ask questions. There will also be questions provided. So if you want more information on these people, please make it your business to show up tomorrow, uh, Thursday night, 6:30. 28th.
At the Westwood.
At Westwood Community, uh, School District, the admin building. It's on Beach Daily, 3335 South Beach Daily.
Council Chair?
Councilwoman?
Is it okay?
And I'd just like to thank, uh, Mike Blackburn for coming in on Saturday. We had a, uh, several-year reunion for the graduates of Annapolis High School at Swapka Park. And, um, Mike was good enough, there was an event later on that evening, the movie night. Come in early and, uh, unlock the bathroom, so everyone was there, uh, could use it. So thank you, Mike Blackburn.
I thought you were saying he graduated with you, I was going to say whoa.
He graduated from Harvard, yeah.
Okay. Any other announcements from administration?
I'll let the clerk go first.
Oh, clerk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Lynn Senia, City Clerk, Dearborn Heights. Um, I'm here with some election news. We have a general city election.
It's moving.
November 7th, 2023. And our office, as well as our election pit crew, have been busy, uh, preparing the absentee ballots for mailing. On this Thursday, they'll be taken over to the Dearborn Post Office for mailing. We'll have our booths up in them and they'll be, the ballots will be available on Thursday. Um, ballot boxes will be open. They'll return AV ballot boxes located here at the city, um, at the Justice Center, our newest one, and at the JFK Library. And then, um, just a reminder to our candidates, to review your sign ordinances, the ordinance for the city. I don't believe they can, the signs can go up until 30 days before the, um, election.
30 or 45?
30. That's what the.
October 7th and November 7th?
Yes.
Whoa.
Nancy knows the ordinance, huh? Yes. And follow the instructions on, in the ordinance. I think the biggest one, the biggest violation is make sure it's not on the property between the sidewalk and the, the, the street. Cause that does, um, obscure, it's an obstruction to drivers. And then anyone, uh, learn, learn, looking to join our team, we're always looking for an, election inspectors. Stop by our office or give us a call at 791-3439. Thank you.
I think Council, the Councilman, uh, Chair wants to join the team.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, he can't right now.
The only guy, first of all, congratulations, congratulations to all the candidates, uh, that are, that are in the elections. Uh, you know, anti-civic duty is, is just so honorable, so hats off to all you guys. But let's hope we don't get on the news by the stealing of signs, whether it's yourselves or any of your supporters. You know, the, the last thing we need to do in Dearborn Heights to have that on the news as other cities have had. So please, no stealing signs, respect the United States Constitution. If somebody wants to run, whether you like them, don't like them, want to vote for them, don't want to vote for them, stealing signs, come on, that's so petty and childish. Let's not do that. Mayor, you had something you want to say?
Yeah, a couple of things. At the police station, they had a couple of weeks back, uh, an auto show, uh, so it was Officer Sirdo. Actually, I wanted to, uh, that was his first annual that he host, he organized. And with the help of several officers, you know, just for, to build, you know, morale, camaraderie and just to bring the community get together. Um, they had their first, uh, annual auto show at the police station parking lot in the front. Uh, it was very successful, so I want to commend Officer Sirdo for doing a good job, showed great leadership and, uh, thank you. Also, uh, uh, from this morning's meeting with the Wayne County, uh, just to give you an update, uh, for the Ekor's Creek. So there's been, uh, some chatter, uh, just want to make sure the residents are, you know, get the right information. Um, we have right now, uh, two communities, we'll not forbid, uh, from Wayne County, uh, since they're in charge of the Ekor's Creek. Um, so Lincoln Park and Ekor's, City of Ekor's, uh, they're the first, they're downstream. So they're looking at them first, you know, obviously they're going to work downstream, you can't work upstream. You know, fix the issue, then everything is going to have a, a bigger flow going downstream, it's going to cause bigger problems. So they're starting down, downstream of the Ekor's Creek. So they started with two, both communities, the Ekor's, uh, City and Lincoln Park. Uh, they're, they're going out for bid, uh, currently, uh, to clean those two areas. Um, they did, uh, send a mailer to Dearborn Heights residents who are affected by the Ekor's Creek, who are actually on Ekor's Creek affected. Uh, what I mean by that is they're actually on the Ekor's Creek and they're the residents who will actually have to work with the county, uh, so they can get on, uh, on, on their property to get to the Ekor's Creek to clean up. So the residents of Dearborn Heights who are affected did get a notice. Uh, the county will be meeting with the individuals, uh, on one-on-one first. And they will be hosting also a town hall, uh, with all the residents to tell them like exactly what they're doing. And that's not going to be, uh, this year. Uh, it will be sometime, uh, late spring next year is when Dearborn Heights will have our turn. So as of right now, it's only Lincoln Park and Ekor's City. And hopefully by mid to late April next year, the county will be meeting, uh, a lot of residents one-on-one, who they have to go into on their property to get to the creek. And they'll let us know when they'll host a town hall meetings so they can get everybody involved. Anybody that is affected by the creek, they can come to the meeting. And if, uh, anybody has any questions, they can reach out to my office. Uh, as of right now, that's, that's what was the latest as of this morning and, uh, that's, that's the most accurate information. I want to make sure residents are aware because there's been a lot of misinformation out there, uh, regarding the cleanup.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Our Library Director, McCaffrey, go ahead.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of items. First off, I wanted to thank all the businesses and organizations that supported our open house at Carolyn Candy Library. Thank you, Antonio's, Booze Delight, Creative Style Salon, Manal Beauty Salon, Mango Languages, Math Noggin, Nowara, Overdrive, Phoenix Medical Equipment, Sam Hot Bakery, Starbucks, Texas Roadhouse and Zagul. Also, thank you, Mayor Bobazzi, Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton, Clerk Lynn Senia. Access to League of Women Voters, the Genealogical Society, DPW, the Police Department and Wayne Houny, Wayne Health Mobile Clinic for your support and participation. Had a great deal of activity, handed out over 340 lanyards, so good work everyone for promoting literacy in your community. Also, Saturday, October 28th, uh, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at Carolyn Candy Library, we will be having our annual trunk retreat and spooky mini golf, mini golf to help benefit Goodfellows. Come, join us as we hand out treats and play mini golf in the library with proceeds going to the Dearborn Heights Goodfellows. We are looking for hole sponsors at 50 per hole, uh, and lots of trunks. So the program is free to the public, any donations made or suggested. Ralphie the Christmas Ghost may be making an appearance, so come on out. Call 313-791-3804 is my phone number if you're interested. Uh, finally, this Saturday, September 30th, from 7:30 to 9:30, at Carolyn Candy Library, we'll be having an outdoor showing of the movie Elemental. The movie was shown on the patio, chairs, elemental swag and refreshments will be provided. Case of poor weather, the movie will be done inside. Uh, on a more somber note, switching gears a little bit, uh, I would like to request a moment of silence for someone who passed last Sunday, uh, gentleman by the name of Anthony Residlo. He was on our police commission, he did a lot of volunteer work for the city. He helped run a lot of CERT meetings, um, and he did a lot of things, um, basically at no charge. He wrote, uh, the history of Dearborn Heights in our 50th anniversary book, uh, and he passed, uh, last Sunday. So I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Um, library will also be at the Bedford Trunk Retreat. It's going to be at the, uh, Fire Department Open House, um, as well handing out crafts. And that's all for now, thanks for your time and see you all at the library. Thank you.
Thanks, Director.
Good job. Yeah, I know, just to make sure. Anybody else from the administration have?
Council Chair?
Yes.
You know, um, I, I failed to mention that, um, me and my family were at the, uh, the police station car show. And the kids loved it, they had some really cool setups there with these little bikes and cars you ride around. And, uh, several cars and there's, there's plenty of room for more cars and the cars that were there were really nice. My little guy, he just loves them, Corvettes and, uh, the hot rods and the big four-wheelers. But they, we had, he, he was especially impressed with the giant towing rig that was there. Uh, over a million dollars it cost and they hoisted a big American flag up there and he, my, my guy, Kaden, he just loves the American flag. And, and he seen that thing going up in the air, I thought this, I was so impressed. And, uh, hats off to all those guys, I believe, was it, uh, JGC Towing? Yeah, that, that supplied? J, JPC? JT Towing, yeah. Okay, yeah, th- those guys, they brought in these big rigs and it was very impressive and, uh, they put on a really good show. Congratulations to everybody from the Police Department that was involved with that. I mean, I know me and my family and everyone that was there had a great time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Okay, so let's go ahead, uh, with, uh, before we go to public comments, I apologize. Uh, Director Jamal, you had a comment from administration? Can't hear you.
Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
He's in his office.
Good afternoon. It's just an announcement, um, for the Ekor's Creek, uh, houses that the, some of the residents applied in October, I mean, in March 2021. We got the grant from FEMA, $3 million for 16 homes. They approved all the homes who applied and they will be hearing from myself and my community and Economic Development Department soon. The grant agreement will be on the City Council and the first meeting in October for their approval. And we will contact them. Please be patient. We will be contacting you, I have all your phone numbers. And if I can't reach you by phone, we will be knocking on the doors with our badges. For the ones who applied in October 2021, 25 homes, they all initially approved. We are waiting for the final approval from the main office in Chicago. We will inform you soon. Hopefully, this will help the residents who cannot take it anymore until we find a solution for, hopefully, soon, for the Ekor's Creek flood. This is not a solution for the flood. This is only a relief from the misery of the flood. We are working together on securing more funding from FEMA to mitigate the flooding of the Ekor's Creek, including the county. You have a great night and please be patient. We just get the approval from FEMA for those 15 homes that been applied for in March of 2021. This is normal process between 18 and 24 months for approval. Congregation for Dearborn Heights on those grants. And it only can occur to the city 10% match. In that match, I am working diligently to try to secure it from other grants, which is the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Disaster Relief. Hopefully, we will be getting that.
Thank you.
Match. Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Chair and congratulations for a, a new council member, uh, Mr. Zuhair Abdul-Hak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hassan.
Thank you. Council Chair? Council Chair? Okay. Yeah, we gotta get to you. I just want to tell, uh, Director Jamal what, you know, what a great job this guy is doing. And believe me, if he calls you and you don't answer, he will come by your house. Believe me.
Uh, next is Director Ali D. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, yes, um, uh, Council, uh, Chair, I just needed, um, um, an announcement, to make an announcement that the gas company, uh, Michkan or DTE has been, uh, has asked us for, um, assistance in trying to, um, they're trying to contact, uh, citizens of the city of Dearborn Heights who currently have, uh, indoor gas meters. Uh, apparently, uh, we have approximately 878 or 880 indoor gas meters in the city of Dearborn Heights. Now, these things are in the process of being phased out because they're dangerous and they must be tested. So the, uh, the gas company has been sending, um, requests to these citizens. They will not share the list with us because it is confidential. But they asked us to, um, um, for the city's support in telling our citizens that these are not a fake request to get access to their basements. They are actually mandated by the Michigan Public Service Commission. They have to be tested, it is a safety issue. Uh, I checked with our, um, Fire Department and they agree. They, the indoor gas meters are, are a headache to everyone because you don't know where they're located, right? So, um, they need to be, um, tested by the gas company. And apparently, a lot of people, especially our senior citizens, when they receive that, uh, request or claim from someone to say, I'm in the, from the gas company and I need access to your basement, they always think that it is a hoax or it's, it's something that is not, um, uh, true. Uh, we just need to make that announcement. It is true, the gas company is required. In fact, they're saying that they have a certain time to do it, otherwise they will shut the gas off. So it is, it is a need, uh, we know about it, the city knows about it. In fact, we have the necessary forms available at City Hall if citizen wanted to pick them up. But if you do have an indoor gas meter, please allow the gas company access to test it for safety reasons.
Thank you.
Mr. Dib, just in case we take people from senior citizens, they may still have, unfortunately, a fake person come up. Can you give a phone number?
Your, your mic's off. Is your mic off?
Oh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Dib, what I was saying, for some senior citizens and, and others, you may still have somebody come up and maybe it's not a, a real, uh, person from the gas company. Is there a number that they could contact at the city they ask, just in case they're not sure if a person is legit or not?
The, the best, the best number is the mayor's office and, and we have all the necessary paperwork, I printed it out. Um, but, uh, uh, unfortunately, I tried to obtain the list of the 880 or 78, uh, but it was confidential. They won't share it with me. So they just asked us for assistance in telling our citizens, if you have an indoor, um, gas meter and you received that letter, please, um, allow them access.
Okay, so Council Chair, that's, I mean, that's, that's a good point. My mom actually had an issue with another contractor that came through, she didn't know who it was. She didn't know who it was. What we can do is we can talk to the regional manager of DTE to see if they can have obviously identifications like an ID or possibly a vehicle that is marked as DTE. So we'll, let's, I guess, we'll regroup with DTE management and see what we can do.
Can you at least maybe give out the phone number for the mayor's office?
Yes, 313-791-3490. So 791-3490. And what we'll do is, I know a lot of seniors that don't have, you know, computers. What we can do is we can post, you know, something at the senior centers, you know, once we get ahold of DTE management to see what protocol, you know, that they can put in place to safeguard our senior citizens. And we can actually put that out there just to make sure that they know what's going on because it's a concern, you know, winter's coming. And DTE already said that if they can't get into the homes, they're gonna shut their gas for safety reasons. And we definitely don't want that, you know, especially when winter's just around the corner.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also have the number for DTE if that's, you know.
Please.
It is on the paperwork, but the number to DTE directly to verify is 877-853-9434. So it's 877-853-9434. It is on the paperwork too.
Okay.
As a good point, we will talk to DTE and see if we can get a true verification before access is granted. But it is a critical issue, especially for older citizens and older homes when they, you know, when they have an indoor meter.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Next up is Director Tim Emery. Go ahead, please.
Ankrup.
I'm sorry, Director Bob Ankrup. I apologize. You promoted him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Ankrup here.
For, sorry.
Quite all right, David. Again, Bob Ankrup here. Good evening, folks. Just wanted to add a little bit to Director McCaffrey's comments regarding the passing of Anthony Residlo. Anthony was a steadfast and long, long-term volunteer on our Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT Team. Actually, he was, he was in the very first class that I taught with that organization many years ago. I think he attended virtually every meeting and participated in every disaster exercise we coordinated. So, so again, Anthony was a, he was a great volunteer. He was a good friend and he will be missed dearly, no question. My condolences to Kim, his wife. But one thing I did wanna pass along is that his funeral services will be this Thursday. Visitation will be at 10 o'clock at the, and help me with the pronunciation, St. Ketteri Catholic Church is over on Rotunda Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, yeah, okay, thank you. That'll be from 10 to 11 and then there will be a mass from 11 to 12. Okay, so again, if anybody is available and interested, that's the time and location of the services.
Okay. Thank you. Any other administrative announcements? Tim Emery, are you making an announcement as the administration? School Board, obviously, administration, correct?
No.
Which? Sorry? Tifa Board. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Unmute.
Thank you for the appointments to the, reappointments to the Tifa Board and for the appointment of Rachel to the Tifa Board, a new member. She will do a great job for us. Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
That works. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and, no, we're gonna go ahead and go to public comments, seeing, I don't see no other directors, is that correct, or administration? So go ahead and go to public comments. You will have three minutes. Please come on up, state your city, street and name, please. All right, before you start, listen, if you're gonna yell.
I have never yelled at you. I do not yell.
All right, ready?
I make it a point.
Ready, three.
Rose to Pepe.
Two.
To Lane Street, I don't need three minutes. Dearborn Heights. I want to half thank you on behalf of the Eaton Senior Recreation Department. Half thank you for what you've done. I can only give you half of thanks because you only did half of what we wanted. But we're gonna get there because we've already got promises. People looking into the rest of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Rose.
Hassan Saad, John Daly, Dearborn Heights. I got two things. One, I wanna bring up the contractor issue about the cement. I took that video. And there was a police call, there was somebody that did call the police out of the residence about them dumping. And as for residents doing driveways or sidewalks, not in that area, it was actually two blocks east. I'm actually building a house on Gully. And the house you guys are talking about is nowhere near where they were fixing street slabs. DPW has warned this same exact contractor before not to dump in the sewers again. Last time I caught that guy doing the slabs, he got a pat on the back and nobody did nothing. You guys approved a contract extension for him. Second thing is I have is for the Police Department with the directors. You know, I'm always up to stand for what's right and to stand, no matter the sides or who or what or may. There was five officers that were written up of an incident that happened months ago. And I believe that the write-up that you guys did is they're targeting certain officers. And that's wrong. I filed a FOIA and I expect that FOIA. And if I don't get that FOIA, I've challenged the Police Department before and I've challenged the old chief before on my own money and I'm not scared to do it again. What you guys did to those officers in leadership and regular offices in patrol is wrong. I want the video that I FOIAed and Mayor and everybody in administration, I'm asking you, do not delay the FOIA and the Police Department not to delay the FOIA. Usually when I send a FOIA, I get a request back that you guys have received it. I have not received no emails back from you. And it's disappointing about what's going on with this, with this specific incident. And if you'd like to comment on it, I'm willing to go into certain details on it. Whatever you want. If you wanna pause my minutes, let them come up, come on up. Pause my time.
I'm gonna, any comments on, no, no, no. I'm not gonna have comments on any ongoing. You can state what you wanna state and then the FOIA request, we can check on the FOIA request for you. But I'm not gonna have the officers discuss anything that's pending, any disciplinary issues or non-disciplinary issues that are confidential. And I'm not gonna violate the law.
I did, your pause, your pause. I'm gonna give you a couple extra seconds.
And it's three minutes. I haven't been up for a minute. I'm counting on my phone.
No, no.
No, you put me 60 seconds.
No, I held you.
No, you're holding the 60 seconds.
No, 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 I'm just getting you ready. You got a minute and 19 seconds. I actually give you extra four seconds. But Council Chair, I wanna make something clear. Hang on one second, Council Chair. Look, this is your meeting. I understand. And if, if you give the permission for a director to get up and say his part to the back to this gentleman, that is your decision. Council, hold on, hold on.
No, no.
Please, point of order. Roger, Roger.
That's in violation.
Roger, point of order.
Okay, Mo, it's fine. Hold on, guys. It's, it's fine, Mo.
I'm not, I'm not going back, I'm not talking about you or him. I'm talking about the council meeting. Roger, with respect, if, if he wants up to speak, he can speak, but Roger. I know, it's disrespectful, Roger, to be honest. I know, while I was speaking to you.
I'm not disrespecting you.
You are. Honestly, you, you are right now.
No, you're disrespecting me.
I'm not. What I'm telling you is point of order and that, you know, you need to go through the council chair when it comes to speaking.
I could talk to anyone I wanna talk to.
No, when you're interrupting the council, also go through the council chair.
And you're being rude to me.
Okay, that's, that's, one at a time. You guys are all gonna talk over each other. I'm not, Council Chair. I understand, I know I can still say, but under circumstances, I'm. I'm not talking about circumstances. Go through the council chair. Yeah. All right, go ahead and continue with your comments.
Officers, officers have the right to defend themselves. Your policies that you're putting in place, I bought, actually, I bought a 48-pack of whistles for you and some white gloves to give to the officers and have them turn in their weapons. If that's how you're gonna run the department as a world-class department, it's a shame because you owed up certain officers that were just responding to assistance. And, and, and I would love for you guys to go retaliate against those officers. Like I've said, like I've said it and I'll say it again, I'm not scared to spend my own money to challenge the department and the leadership in the department again. And it's a shame. We're, we're promoting officers to come in our city. We're not promoting officers to run away from our city. And what happened with this incident, this has nothing to do with Arab-American officers or white officers or any officers. It's the officers involved. It was five officers in particular. You guys know exactly what I'm talking about.
It's not the form, please.
I'm sorry, it's not the form, but if this is the only way I'm gonna get my voice on it, I'm gonna make it the form.
Yes, you do, you do have, so far from what you said, you do have a right to say. Go ahead.
And like I said, I requested a FOIA request in detail about it. And I have not even received a response from the Police Department, which I usually do, that you guys even received this. And I'm gonna put this right here. And this is no threat or no promise to nobody. If I don't get my FOIA, I got skeletons on every one of those directors in the department. And I'm gonna start spelling them out from all departments.
I'm gonna object to any threats being said to anybody in the department. That is a threat.
Okay, there is a threat.
Be clear, that's a threat.
Okay.
That is a threat.
That's not a threat. Why I've obtained from other departments as public information.
It's a threat. And you're not making anyone afraid of you. Okay? That is a threat.
That's not a threat.
I am clear.
Very clear, it's not a threat.
You do whatever you gotta do.
It's not a threat.
But you don't come in here threatening anybody. You can make a promise. I make a promise. We'll respond.
Okay.
But we're not gonna be threatened and held accountable to you or any threats that.
That is not a threat.
Okay, that's enough.
Point of order.
Roger, okay, made your point. Stop, that's a stop. You've made your point. That's enough, thank you. All right. Who else is next? Come on up.
Congratulations, Mr. Abdul-Hak.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the people who ran. Nice job. I wanna ask the Police Department a question a while back.
Okay, talk through the chair, please. Yes.
A while back, the council approved body cameras for the Police Department. And I, and I was wondering if there were any left so that the ordinance officers can have the body cameras also. Or are you doing anything to make sure that our ordinance officers are protected the same way?
Okay, I mean, I, I don't want this thing to be back and forth. Finish all of your questions and allow them to answer the questions if they choose to. Go ahead.
Okay. And the other question I am, have is, correct me if I'm wrong, but was there a contracted employee hired recently?
I hear the last part you asked.
Contracted employee hired recently. Is the Human Resource Director here?
Okay, so again, make all your requirements and questions that we'll ask the person to come up and answer if they so choose. Because otherwise, I don't want this thing to be back and forth for eight, 10 minutes. It's three minutes, so.
I'm not arguing with you, David. That's it, my questions.
Oh, that's it? Okay.
That's it.
Is there anybody from the Police Department that would prefer to answer those? Okay?
Was there a question to the Police Department?
Body cams.
Body cams?
Body cameras. Are there any available for the ordinance officers?
Wait, let, let him finish first. One second.
Okay, the question was, good morning, excuse me, good evening, my bad. Body cameras available for ordinance. So the body cameras that were put into, put into service for the Police Department paid for a federal grant for the Police Department. We are working with Director Dishrun about body cameras for ordinance. It's a fantastic idea. There's additional funding that we're gonna have to do. Do we have extra? No, that's not kinda how that works. But we are working towards getting them those things to put it on because there's policies, there's procedures, there's, when they go and interact with people of the public, you know, just like when we do, when we interact with the public, those that are victims or witnesses, we have to redact certain things. So there's a lot of things in play that need to be considered before you just slap a camera on a public official, so to speak. So that is being worked on with the director. We, we've made available all of our efforts, our work product to him while he's developing that.
Okay. And the second question, you haven't answered for that?
I'm not sure what the question was. Somebody restate it?
Contracting employee?
I asked if there has been a contract employee hired recently.
Where?
For the city.
Vince, I'm sorry.
So I'm out of this.
Okay. Is there any specific time or department you talked about?
It was a couple of months back and I thought, I thought it was for engineering.
For engineering in the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean.
Okay, so anybody in engineering, there's no engineering department for engineering, specifically, you're saying?
Yes, specifically engineering.
Okay, Mayor, has there been, anybody?
Is there a contract employee?
Is there any new contract employee in engineering hired by the city? Go ahead.
Okay, I did, because I thought that was, that happened a while back. And the only reason I ask about the body cameras is because I feel the ordinance officers need the same protection as our Police Department because they put up with a lot of crap out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Next up? City's street name, please.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. So first, thank you guys with the whole appointment process. I think you guys made a good choice. I hope to see some good things happen in the next few months.
Hang on, one second, one second.
Oh, you forgot to start my clock.
Shh, sucks, man. How do you do this?
This new pro tem, he really needs some practice. Not like Mr. Muscat, right?
Ready, three, two, one.
Thank you. So thank you for all that. Regarding the actuary report for the contract, as a resident, I am asking you guys to get that done. However, that needs to happen. Residents need to know how much money we are spending with our money that we're entrusting to you. We need to know how much that's gonna cost. Because we need to know that so that we can hold you guys accountable. So that when it comes time for elections, if we disagree with the choices that you made and the holes you dug, that we can change it up. That's how democracy works. We need to know the facts so that we can hold you accountable at elections. So I really request that you guys get that actuary report done, whether you request it of the mayor, do a vote, next time a resolution, however, get it done. If the mayor knows what he's doing, he would have already gotten it done. But it is what it is. Regarding the candidate forum this week, we will be streaming it. I spoke to Councilwoman Brier. I'll be able to stream it on DBH411. That stands for Dearborn Heights DBH, the 411, get it? It's on Facebook and YouTube. If you need to find out how to get that, we can help you get it. So if you're not able to attend in person, it will be streamed and recorded. Mo, you kind of included me with a group of people who I would say support the police. I wanna just clarify, because sometimes I think things can be hard when we have a limited time. I am against toxic workplaces. I am against people not being paid a living wage. Everyone, every single one of our employees deserves a living wage. Generally speaking, I'm not a fan of policing in America. I strongly believe in police reform. I strongly believe that there are things that we need to do to make policing work for America. How that works, how that looks, that's a whole other topic. But I just wanna be clear that I'm for a safe, welcoming workplace for every single But I just want to be clear that I'm for a safe, welcoming workplace for every single one of our employees, police, fire, whatever. That, I just wanted to make that clear.
I'm going to stop that right there, just to let you know, my comment was, you were always fighting to make sure that we have more officers, we're paying them well.
Well, that, it's the more officers part that maybe I would disagree with.
Yeah.
Maybe not more officers, but better pay. I would agree with you there.
That was my statement.
That was the part, the more officers. I'm not necessarily a fan of more officers. Finally, I would encourage all of you, especially our corporate counsel, to maybe do a refresher on the First Amendment. When it comes to free speech, the public has the ability to comment on what we would like to comment on. And we can say that however we like within reason, a certain amount of things like the not shouting fire in a theater. If the city feels that something is untrue or slanderous, they have the option to pursue litigation. An individual who feels that they were slandered against has the opportunity to pursue litigation. You do not have the permission to just shut down speech.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just comment, I did my thesis on the First Amendment affirmative action with Archer-Walcott, who prosecuted Richard Nixon. I did two years for him to graduate from Boston University Law School. I have my refresher courses.
Counselor Chair, just, I wonder, something that Mr. Lapointe said about the actuary. The administration stated that they have a report, I'd like that report given to the city council for our next meeting. Then we can go as far as seeing if we need an actuary done.
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting that.
Are you officially requesting?
Yeah, I'm officially requesting the report that he's. The mayor stated that he had a report that he could give us on the actuary, the financial impact of the contract.
No, he did not.
I never said I had a report, I said if you guys need a report, just request it.
That's why I'm requesting it officially requesting.
Okay, well, to make it clear, there's not a specific report that's done. He's saying if you'd like a report, an actuary report done, then put a request at city council meeting as a body, and then they could go ahead and add it.
That's not what he said, he said, we don't need an actuary, if we want a report, he'll give us a report.
No.
I would say, I don't know.
Go back and review that tag, okay, do I?
Yeah. He said if you want one.
You don't need to, you don't need to cancel them, cancel the, suspend the rules, you could just ask for one at the next council meeting, or even.
Plus, there's a cost.
Yeah. Okay. Bud?
Hi, Sue Kaminsky, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. First off, Dave, to you, your family, that tragic incident with your cousin, my heart goes out to all of you. There's, you know, no way that's a good way to die, but that was a bad way. And so, my sympathies.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Secondly, back in June, I believe, it might have been May, there was discussion about 24 properties. And this body asked the city to come back with the list. And to my knowledge, you have not received that list.
Thirty-four.
Was it thirty-four? But you have not received that list. Just a little reminder, I think it's important to get that list. Next thing, Zuhair, congratulations. I think the city is better with you on this council, and I think it was a good choice.
People like you make me want to do these things.
Well, thank you. Two weeks ago, I stood here and I was concerned about the kids and traffic and the school crossings. The mayor thought that I was giving wrong information. Unfortunately, I was correct, and I didn't want to be correct. And we ended up having our superintendent walk kids at Riverside at least two days in a row that I know about. I did contact Director Swope on a Thursday evening last week, after 7:00 PM. He replied within 15 minutes, and since then, the police have been there every day. So kudos to Director Swope. And then, I'm really excited about the opportunity to get more police. It's what I have been preaching, and you guys are so sick of hearing me. I just want our police force to be at full staff. I want them to not be tired from too much overtime. So I'm really excited about the opportunity to get back to a full police force. And I hope that we utilize Act 78 that the citizens voted in, in the hiring process for the new police. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Before the next person comes up, Councilman, earlier, Councilman Abdalak, you had something you wanted to say, or you were all set? Not in regards to Sue, before Sue. Okay, go ahead.
Mohammed Jani, Evangeline, Dearborn Heights. First, I want to congratulate Zohair Abdalak and his appointment tonight. I'm very glad and.
Is the mic on?
Excited to hear it, it's not on? Okay.
It's on.
All right. On a, on a different note, is Ali Deep still on the thing?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Okay, so.
Director Deep?
I'd like an update, it's been about a month or so, kids are in school, what's the latest on the crossing?
Okay, so finish with all your questions and comments, okay. So Mr. Deep, would you like to comment on that, please?
Sure.
He's looking for an update on the crossing at Beach Daily, across from Crestwood.
Yes, so the crossing is in the design phase. I can't issue it to construction until the grant money is in place. If you recall, it's a SEMCOG process. So SEMCOG money is allocated for 24 construction, and I said that from the beginning. So we're using their money, so we can't fund it and go for money afterwards. We're waiting for that, but it is in the design phase, and the construction is scheduled for April, as early as April 24.
Okay, but along with this, with his comments, we had a, I think, rah-rah moment, saying that we could at least get people out there to put paint on the streets, cross, you know, paint some crosswalks, have some police officers there, have crossing people there. As you all know, driving down that street in the morning during, during school time, it's as crazy as it's ever been. So what happened to gathering a bunch of people and going out there and painting the crosswalk ourselves? I'm basically asking you guys, city council.
Okay, so this is something that's obviously administration, at the end of the day, on our end, we just approve any type of budget. I would be all okay with that, obviously, and this was something on administration that we're going to be looking into. So fortunately, the director is not here to be able to answer it.
I think there was somebody offered a paint and.
Oh, okay.
I thought somebody offered the paint, and it was just a matter of getting the bodies out there to go paint it or whatever. It was about a month or a month and a half ago.
Are you talking, Mr. Jani, thank you, are you speaking about in front of Crestwood?
Yes.
Specifically?
Specifically, I am.
Yes, so I can tell you this, that I'm going to recognize, Mr. Conrad, that all the schools have been painted, except for Crestwood because of Beach Daily. Now, I am not saying that it's okay, but I would like to see some big, I was just driving in Birmingham, and I see a similar street to Beach Daily, and they have these big rectangles, and when you're going through it, you see the rectangles on the road. So maybe we should have that there, where, and you can maybe write school zone on the right side of the school.
Something to slow these people down, make them more aware, they're all oblivious to the signs or people crossing. I mean, something's got to be done, I mean, we're not going to get this done until April of 2024. We're talking, that's months away, anything can happen. So please, let's address this sooner than later.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jani. Next up? Actually, before we start, Bilal, Robert Conrad's got his hand up, do you have a quick comment to make, Director, on that? I assume it's in regards to Mr. Jani. Go ahead, unmute yourself, please. Director Conrad?
Yes, we have painted all the crosswalks throughout the city. There may be some that need some refreshing. So if someone has some concerns, they can always call us at the DPW. Let us know where they have some concerns, we'll go out and take a look at them and see, you know, if they do need refreshing. But every crosswalk has been done. There may be one quadrant where there was concrete work being done, that we're waiting for the concrete to cure a little bit. But those are on our radar to be completed as, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay, Director, he does have a concern in regards to Beach Daily crosswalk directly across from the school. So if you could look into the Crestwood School District, Crestwood School, High School crossing area, until such point, they have a mechanical structure, not structure, I'm sorry, until they go through the more formal process. If you could look into that, please.
Okay, there is, so there is an existing crosswalk there, because we don't put crosswalks in if there isn't a traffic control device. You know, so there is no random crosswalks that can be put in. They have to be at, you know, traffic controlled areas with either stop signs or traffic signals, so.
Okay.
But I'll look at Beach Daily in the Crestwood School, High School area and see if there's anything that we missed.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, everyone, Bilal Hamoud, Outer Drive. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for considering my candidacy for this position, for the vacancy. Congratulations, Councilman Abdalak.
Thank you.
I'm confident.
Thank you for putting your name.
Of course. For this next piece, I was a little torn on whether or not I should proceed, but I think it has to be said. After I put in my name for the vacancy, and it's something that I wanted to do to fill a four-month term to help serve this community, I immediately got calls and texts berating me and insulting me and my family for applying for something that was, I think, perceived to these people as their seat. And in my professional career, I have never encountered such unprofessionalism. It was incredibly disappointing. And in the coming days, my family received calls, harassment, my family, and countless lies and threats were directed at me.
Did you make a police report?
I will be.
Yeah, you should.
I'm not one to engage in the dramatic side of politics, but this behavior crossed the line. Families should never be involved. All individuals feeling entitled to positions and willing to tarnish the reputation of anyone who stands between them and that, that they think is theirs, is unacceptable.
Good for you.
I choose to live in this city. I love it, I have a deep respect for it, I don't plan on leaving it. So I encourage everyone to remain positive and keep things clean moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamoud. Bud?
Bilal, I've known you for a long time. You are a real gentleman in this community, and I'm happy that you are living in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street. I don't know if any of you guys are aware, on last Friday around 3:08 PM, party school, once again, there is a child hit riding his bike home from school. This area, we got the crosswalks painted, but we need more. Also, too, Taylor, over this week, had installed LED flashing stopping lights. I did my homework. They're very expensive. $405, $405,000, $768. I read that way wrong, but they're, they're pretty penny. But that's to cover all of our school zones in Dearborn Heights. The estimated total for the Brightside post reflectors for all three school districts are $9,597.81. That is something I strongly feel that we need to look into. It's becoming nighttime, kids are staying after school, plays are going on. Please, guys, let's look into something as far as that. Read another statistic. Sadly, there are more than 1,000 fatal school transportation-related crashes between 2011 and 2020, with an average of 113 fatalities per year. Studies have found that as many as 40 students are hit by a vehicle while walking each day, resulting in more than 15,000 injuries on an annual basis. Statistic two, each week in the US, there are 15 pedestrian deaths walking to and from school. I feel these statistics are very repeating. Can we look into getting a grant or something for these Brightside reflectors, please? Around our school zones at the least? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I got a quick question, real quick, I'm sorry, I saw, I saw your post, by the way, I actually saw that, and you gave us the number of. So sorry, I need your pen.
Stay up there, Margaret, because Director would like to comment on that. You said would like to, come on up.
What was the total, the number that you said for the reflectors just in our school zone?
For all three school districts around the schools? If I mapped Quest everything right and I counted all the stop signs and everything, if they're all up to date, it should be $9,597.81.
Okay, my next question, you gave me like a $400,000 number.
That's for the LED flashing stop signs.
$400,000? Okay, and then.
Am I saying that right? I think so, I got the numbers, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Okay, the director would like to comment on your statement, so, thank you. Come on up.
Hello again. On the, the young individual that got hit the other day, very unfortunate, but I also want to set some context, too, and let's have a discussion real quick. First, young man did make a poor choice, unfortunately. There was a crosswalk, some short distance away, there was a crossing guard.
Director, I'm just not going to go in, if there's a civil lawsuit?
Nope, I, I agree, sir. I agree, sir. There are certain things there in place, so let's just have a real quick conversation. It's going to take everybody to have safe crossings and safe streets, slowing down, as you guys have all said. You know, actually stopping at stop signs, because they have a white banner around them, doesn't mean they're optional. You stop at stop signs, you work with your young people to actually cross at crosswalks. There's not enough police to make this problem go away. There's not enough crossing guards I can hire. But there's conversations you can have with children to say, hey, let's do the right thing and cross at crosswalks. Or if you're an adult and you see a youngster who might not even be yours, hey, don't do that. But it's got to take all of us to solve this thing. It's just, we can't police our way out of it, nor crossing guards out of this. So again, and I agree with Roger, I don't want to get into it because that's not what it's about. But what it's about is looking out for each other, making sure our youngsters who might not have the right frame of mind, hey, son, you know, ma'am, please don't do that, go over there. That's all it's going to take, is all we watch out for each other. I've seen that enough in this city, they do it, I'm happy to say, I'm glad other parents look out for their other children, but that's what we have to keep doing. That's all I wanted to add to that. I'm very happy to say, I like that the parents look out for their each children, please keep doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Next up?
Hello?
Counsel, Ahmal Kabi, Midway Street. I'll wait till the.
Yeah, all right, Bud?
I just wanted, I'm going to keep this brief, I wanted to begin by thanking the council for considering me for the vacancy of Ray Muscat's seat. I'm, I was really happy with the candidate pool that we had, we had a lot of wonderful talent, a lot of dedicated folks, and a lot of experience as well. And I'm happy with the decision that the council took, I know Mr. Zohair Abdalak has a lot of experience and will be an asset to the board. And, you know, it's, I will continue serving this community. I know that we have an election coming up on November 7th, so we'll be hitting the doors hard and continuing to talk to our residents as well.
Wait, wait, the only thing is you can't campaign, so.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just avoid that.
Yeah, no worries, no worries, admit that part out. But yes, I wanted to thank you all, and I'm going to keep it brief as well, but I hope you all have a wonderful night. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for running, as to all of you. Bud?
Ned Apigian Rosetta Street. I'd like to say something about the discussion on pensions. First of all, municipal employees of the city are very fortunate. Very few people get pensions. I told my wife that passed the test 40 years ago. Too bad you didn't take that job, you'd be getting about $2,000 a month. Fortunately, my wife worked 40 years for a law firm, guess what her pension is? How about zero? Guess what my pension is? Zero. Pensions are luxuries beyond belief, the police and fire have it better than most. I'm not a actuarian, but the first thing I would have done is find out what police are paid in Trenton, Ekor, Swine Dot, Melvindale, Allen Park, Lincoln Park. And I wouldn't take, I don't have to be an actuarian, maybe $40,000 is the right price to start. We never, I didn't hear anything about how you're going to increase that, 5% a year, 10% a year. So within five years, they're well beyond 50. I don't know what the number is. I can't be compared with Dearborn, this is a bedroom community with limited commercial, no industrial. You don't know what you can afford, I'm not against the police, I'm not, I wouldn't be a policeman at $80,000 a year, and I couldn't be a fireman. So you find out what the facts are, find out what that number is, don't compare it with Dearborn. I read the local newspaper, page to page, you know what I see? Fire chiefs in cities that you wouldn't want to work in, after they get their pension, they get another job in Plymouth Township. We could be hiring veteran policemen because this place is not the jungle. They're paying bigger at places that are dangerous, and then they retire after 20 years, 25 years, and they get jobs in minor communities, Plymouth Township, God knows what farming community. Those are advantages you have, think about it like that. If I had done a smart thing and decided to take a job at 18 and wait 20 years, they're all getting a salary. I got cousins that retired from the military that got political, jobs working for the post office. Think about that. Do not include uniforms, overtime pay, vacation pay, and let them put it on their pensions. That's a big problem that we had when I was on the council.
Thank you, Ned. Any other members in the audience?
I'm sorry, I forgot to say, congratulations, Zuhair, and good luck in the election.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have somebody on Zoom, Nicole Buckman, please go ahead, unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I.
All right, I just got a quick question and a comment about 7B for the new payroll company. Do we know when that's going to go into effect? And then the comment based on that question would be, I was working in the comptroller's office when we had gone from ADP to Paylocity, and what had happened is, it was towards the end of the year, and it was double reported, so we got two W2s. So when people were going to file their income taxes, it was showing, just say hypothetically, instead of making 40,000, you made 80,000, which obviously was not correct, because it was double reported, and it was a hassle to get that corrected. So just something for comptroller King to keep in mind, if the switch is going to happen before the end of this year, make sure that it's not double reported by Paylocity and Paycom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. I'm not sure if it's Mariana, or maybe the mayor, or somebody could just relay that message, just in case, to the comptroller. Okay? Anybody else with a public comment? Hearing or seeing none on Zoom?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Councilman Beidoo, supported by Councilman Constan, thank you very much, and all a good night.